And the media may also be audibly and/or visually recording this meeting, as well, a reminder that all electronic devices are to be switched to a non-audible function during committee meetings. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Item 8.1, the Municipal Greenhouse Gas Challenge Fund Report, PW 17079, FCS 17082, has a new appendices A and C. A revised copy has been copied as before you on yellow. I've also put in the middle B so that you have the whole package together, but only A and C were amended. And with those amendments, the recommendations A and C on the front page of the report, the numbers have also changed. The dollar amounts have changed in subsection A from $8,75210 to $7,977,460. And in subsection C, the dollar amount of $7,22113 has changed to $8,765,613. As well, we have an added private and confidential item, 12.2, the Hamilton-Wentworth District School Board property at 77 Gage Avenue North, and that falls under subsection C of the Municipal Act.
Thank you very much. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, moved by Counselor Skelly, seconded by Counselor Conley. All those in favor, carried. We have declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? Okay. And before we move on to the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, I'd like to acknowledge in our midst today, former Counselor, Mr. Dave Wilson. We are now on to item 3.1. May I please have a motion to approve the October 4th minutes as presented? That's moved by Counselor Conley, seconded by Counselor Partridge. All those in favor, carried. We have delegation requests. What's the committee's wish respecting item 4.1? Dr. Patrick Dean, President, moved by Farr, seconded by Partridge. All those in favor, carried. Consent items. May I please have a motion to receive items 5.1 and 5.2? I actually, before we receive them, I'd like an update on them quickly.
Through the Chair on 5.1?
Correct.
Okay, through the Chair. If you recall, back in March of 2017, we came in with a presentation, facility staff with the creation of a security office. And I think it was Counselor Collins sent it back to the city manager's office to find it within the organization. And we did find the position in Hamilton Water. So it's a position that's currently within the FTE base, as well as the funding is within the current envelope.
Excellent. Are there any questions as it relates to item 5.1? And if I could please, for the purpose of the public and the media present, have an update on item 5.2.
With respect to the update on the event that happened back in July, we are just providing an update with how security is allocated when special events are held, both on interior and exterior on city property. With respect to exterior events being held on city property, the process is, there are different processes for allocating security. And in some events, in fact, the owners of the event or the people that set up the event are, in fact, currently, may bring in their own security. Where Facilities has, is the department that is responsible for booking events, and we book the events. It is our security provider, that is the corporate security contract provider, that is assigned to provide security on both interior events and exterior events.
Just the red button there. Fortunately, we'll be having an update of our council chambers.
Very soon.
Ms. Duarte, yes.
My apologies. When security is allocated from the Facilities Department, it is, in fact, only primary response are currently a security provider that is authorized to provide security. However, there are events booked through different departments where they are currently authorized to provide their own security services. This will be changing when the corporate security office is established, and we have the Staff Security Task Force, where we will be implementing new policies and procedures that may, in fact, change that.
I'm going to pass the Chair over to Counselor Farr. Members of this committee may remember that this motion, this report, is probably, due to the motion that I brought forward, basically addressing the fact that we had groups that were identified as being paramilitary groups affiliated with extreme white supremacist organizations, acting as de facto security on city grounds. That caused concerns for residents who did not feel safe on city property. And my understanding was that we had, within our licensing regime for bars and restaurants, a requirement for licensed security operators. And so you remember, members of this committee, that I requested this to come back, and I still have concerns that we're going to wait until a security office has been put forward before we address this, given the rise of protests and counter protests and the escalation of violence. And so I would like to ask through you, Mr. Acting Chair, why is it we don't go ahead and extend the licensing regime to events that are on city properties, to security companies to be mandated to be fully licensed?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Since the July incident occurred, Facilities has since, in the only event that happened, the Gandhi Peace Festival, we didn't, in fact, bring in our own security, and we will be doing that moving forward. It was a lesson learned to prevent the situation that happened in July from happening again. Moving forward, whether we change the process and actually require other licensed security firms to act through our licensing department, that's something that we can consider. But we are not actually waiting for the security office to be implemented, to now take additional steps and have security present wherever we feel that there is a need to have security. I should mention that in the July incident, the groups that attended, we were not informed that they would be attending. They just showed up.
Right.
And the police were, in fact, present. So we would always default to the police in any case for any aggressive incidences that might happen, but it is prudent to have our security.
So just for clarity to members of this committee, my interest isn't so much in that we are mandated to provide additional corporate security here. You're quite right, through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Duarte, that Hamilton Police Service is on-site and ought to be, under their mandate, keeping the peace, as it were. The challenge I have is that when you have groups that present in paramilitary fashion, carrying out security-like detail in a very militant way, then they are, in fact, acting as security on these grounds to the detriment of the general public. And so absent of bringing them into a licensing regime and making that requirement as a part of the seat application, if they want to present security, because I don't believe every rally or any, every event needs to have security, I don't believe that at all. In fact, it might be the case that that didn't need private security, that the police were adequate. I know we pay hundreds of thousands of dollars in special event permits and paid-duty policing. But the challenge that I have, Mr. Chair, is that by not bringing them under the regime, we could not then for proactively trespass them and remove them from the property, because they would be, at that point, within the current framework of our policies and procedures. But I can tell you that there is, under the criminal code, I don't know exactly what section, but a prohibition in this country from forming paramilitary-like militias. So that's already against the law. Whether the federal government wants to address it or not, the rise of these white supremacist groups is real, and I do not want them operating on city grounds in this way. So I don't know if it needs a direct motion, perhaps, or we just, actually, I will move a motion at this time, to require that groups that present on city properties be licensed. And what that does, Mr. Chair, is that for those that are not operating in that way, if they just want to show up and exercise their constitutional rights, their charter rights of freedom of expression, that's fine, they can do that. Always limited, though, from Section 2, and making sure that it's not crossing the line into hate speech and not crossing the line into incitement of violence against targeted groups. And so I think we need to be very clear about this, unequivocal. I think we'd be gravely naive if we don't think that this is going to continue to happen. It's not a one-off event. They continue to, you know, organize across the country in this way. And the three percenters, the Sons of Odens and other things, ought not to be providing security detail on public property. So I'll be very clear about that. I'll ask the support from the members of this council. I'm certainly happy to hear their questions before I move this motion.
You have some speakers?
Yeah, well, I'll move the motion.
Okay.
That non-licensed security groups be required to be licensed in order to provide security-like details on public properties.
Seconded by Counselor Aiden Johnson, Ward 1, and you have a speaker's list, and it starts with Counselor Whitehead and then Counselor Partridge.
Well, I hear the concern, I guess ultimately and fundamentally, freedom of speech, City Hall is the iconic center of governance that enables the community from all various facets to attend and provide their free speech. So I certainly do not want to do anything that deters that opportunity, period. Second piece is, I don't think we need licensing, but I do agree that, and I always thought, maybe I need clarification, if they're not applying for a permit to be here to provide that opportunity for free speech, then, in fact, if we can incorporate it in a model, then they're, in fact, trespassing. I think many, if we look at best practice across North America, most of them are permitted. So yes, you can have access to public space, but you're going to have to make an application for it. And it also helps control those points of conflict that's being addressed by the former speaker. So the question I have is, when organizations utilize City Hall, do they, and are they required to provide, apply for a permit?
Through you, Mr. Speaker. The forecourt of City Hall is actually divided into two sections. There is the section that we consider city-owned, and then there is the road allowance. When an event is held in the forecourt, generally, there are two ways of booking it. If it meets certain criteria, for example, if there's loudspeakers are required, it has to go through the seat application process. If it doesn't meet the seat criteria, then it's booked through our Facilities Management Department. However, on the road allowance, that's just in front of the fountains, any public group can book or can attend at any time without notifying Facilities or any group. It's considered public, and we really can't prevent, at the moment, we can't prevent, through our Facilities Group, congregation there for the purpose of events. That was the situation that occurred in July. We did not, and we're not in... Sorry, having microphone problems. We were not informed of the groups, the three percenters, coming on-site. Having said that, there are ways that we can address that. They do, in neither situation do they apply for permits where they apply through Facilities. But when it's a seat application, they do have to have approval through the seat process.
Yeah, okay. So two things I want to focus on. One is that anyone utilizing the forecourt of the City Hall, the city property, I'm suggesting, regardless of whether they're using speakers or not, would do, and I want to make this clear, because it's not about deterring access to the forecourt to provide public speech, but certainly to help inform us and ensure that it's done in an orderly fashion, we can incorporate the policy that all these type of functions on the forecourt would apply for a permit. Is that, you're indicating that's not the case. It only goes through a seat if they're using application.
That's correct. That's the current situation.
So I think, Mr. Chair, maybe we need to review that as far as that activity. Now, I understand and appreciate the second component, that the three percenters in this particular case were predominantly on the right-of-way. Help me understand the rules on right-of-way. I thought right-of-way, the reason we have right-of-ways is to ensure safe access and walking and so forth for the general public. So help me understand how it could become a form for protest.
They don't have to apply through us to hold an event there. They can turn up. We don't have a current process to deny them. It would be, it's considered public property, albeit it's city property, but it is considered not part of the City Hall site, so they don't apply through Facilities.
Okay. And constitutionally, we'd be hard-pressed, I guess this is through the Chair to the lawyer, to provide any stiffer regulations on our right-of-ways in the context of free speech or right to assemble?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Certainly, the requirements and the law around those two different properties are different. That's the distinction that staff have identified. It would need to be assessed as the time came up, but yes, it is, it does have a different constitutional assessment.
And are you aware that whether we could regulate our public right-of-ways in the context of free assembly?
No, and that's where the challenge does arise, that the courts have determined that those areas are available to the public for those types of activities.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So from my point of view, permits for all organizations using public space, I think it's just a best practice, and I want to make it clear that I hope, if we go that direction, if they're using application, probably the paperwork would be a little more, you know, a little more involved. But if it's just simply coming to the forecourt to utilize it for free speech, I hope it's just, you know, identifying the organization, what expected crowd, who the contact people are. It's just a very simple form, so we're not deterring the access to City Forecourt for public assembly. As far as the licensing piece, I don't know how you license, and maybe I can ask this through the Chair, to Nicole, how can you license any organization for public assembly on a right-of-way?
So I believe that the request wasn't so much for regulating the activity, but for the type of security that's provided.
Oh, fair enough.
And certainly, I understand we do do that in certain instances. That would be, I think, the restricted focus. But again, we would want to, I think, review that as part of the updated security, and perhaps, definitely can speak to that.
Well, just before you do that, Mr. Chair, we had a labor protest, probably one of the largest labor protests of the Harris days. I can't remember what the numbers are, but they were in the tens of thousands of people marching on the streets of Hamilton. And I can tell you that although the police were obviously there, we also incorporated through the application process where a lot of the, they provided a lot of their own security. The Labor Council was quite involved. They wore distinctive colors to keep the crowd orderly and marching. It was probably one of the most peaceful, even though it's a very emotional protest we've ever seen. And again, supplemented to our policing, they provide the security. I just don't know if we go into a regime of having them licensed, what that would mean to organizations like the Labor Council when they host these significant events. Would it not create a greater challenge?
Perhaps, Daphne can speak to that, but my, what I would suggest is certainly it might be something that we could appropriately review as staff and give further feedback on, but I'll let Pat.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The seat application process does have some limited guidelines on security requirements in certain situations. One of them is if the event is, in fact, on the road or requires traffic, then, in fact, the police services are the only ones that can provide those services, and that's a requirement of the seat application. There are a few other ones. When alcohol is served, the seat application process also includes a provision that off-duty police officers must be available to provide security in those types of instances. So their process, albeit they're not represented here today, speak to the process. I'm aware, in practical terms, that they do have those provisions to manage security in various types of circumstances.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. So just to wrap up, I don't have any problem, right across the community, actually, to look at licensing. If we don't have it currently in place, we license a lot of other things, why we wouldn't have a license for legitimate security firms within our community? So if it's not in place, I certainly support looking at it and considering it. When it comes to the free right of assembly, I want to ensure that we don't lose sight of the fact that a lot of great organizations go to great lengths to provide an orderly security, the supplements what's already enforced on them by the seat applications. I just don't want to deter that type of proactive, responsible organization. So every action we have, it could be a consequence. I just want to make sure that the unintended consequences are also considered. Thank you.
Counselor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And, you know, I have similar concerns, I guess, if we're with the motion, and actually, I'd like to hear it again, because I think what I'm hearing is that we just don't have the policies and the process in place to account for the security that may be needed. And I don't want to see, whatever we decide to do, which is not going to be today, because I still think we need to get a report back from staff. There's much more information that we need before we can make any kind of a decision. My question, through you, Chair, is to our legal counsel. Now, you've been listening to the conversation here. Is there, is there anything that we have in place right now with our policies, or is there any, is there strengthening of our policies, or do we need to even bring forward policies to be able to provide what is being asked for today? Through you, Chair.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, so certainly, my understanding is that there are certain aspects of what's being required through the seat approval process, but that to expand it or to do anything beyond that, to look at the specific requirements of the motion, we would want to review those policies, and it would require potentially, well, an amendment to the licensing bylaw. So we would need to review that and to ensure that it does balance all of those factors in terms of the other concerns raised at council today.
Yeah, and, you know, clearly, I think, what I heard, anyway, my understanding is, from the motion and also from the discussion, is the issue isn't with the seat application and those who go through that process. The issue is with the assembly of, and I think the term was non-registered military-type groups. That's what I'm hearing. It's how do we capture a process and a policy that would address that? That's my question.
And through you, Deputy Mayor. I believe, and I'll, maybe the clerk can assist, but I do believe there is an outstanding report that is looking at those particular issues. If it isn't, then certainly we could incorporate it into that, or we can review that as part of that discussion.
Okay, so to your understanding, then, through you, Chair, there is a report in process right now? When is it due?
I don't have that at the top of my head, and I'm just remembering, so if it isn't in that process, then certainly that could be incorporated, and if not, I don't know, Stephanie, if it, anything comes to mind.
Well, and I think that's important, because I think that's really at the core of what we're talking about here, is, you know, we have the right to assemble, certainly. But I don't want, whatever we do, to backlash on other groups in our community that legitimately should be able to assemble on the property, the public property, you know, particularly the Aboriginal community, and there's others who we have coming to our forecourt. And I wouldn't want there to be any unpleasant situations that send the wrong message to those groups, certainly, because we're a very inclusive city. And we need to be very careful, I think, around this council table, that we maintain that integrity. So those are my comments and my questions, but I think I would like to hear the motion again and reserve for further questions. Thank you.
Well, our second-time speaker is the mover of the motion. I'm sure he'd be happy to oblige.
Thank you very much. And I'd also like to respectfully submit that, in fact, my original motion, I thought, very comprehensively covered off what the intention was, which is what I believe led to this report. And so I think the report that was referenced is actually the report that's before us, but unfortunately, is incomplete in terms of what I was asking for. But I do want to make some clarifications. In this country, there is no such thing as free speech. Our charter does not account for free speech. We account for freedom of expression, which is limited under Section 1 of our charter, which is already under that, had a legal test of R versus Keegstra as it relates to hate speech. So I just want to be very clear about that. This motion is not about freedom of assembly. This motion is not about freedom of peaceful assembly, I should say, or the right for association. People have the right to be racist and bigots. People have the right to hold whatever opinions they'd like to hold. I in no way care to limit the freedom of assembly of any group in this city who holds their own ideology, regardless of what that may be. We are in a free and democratic country. They have the right to assemble. So I want to establish that very clear. What I'm concerned about is when the freedom of peaceful assembly is removed, and we have paramilitary groups acting as security detail on public property. That is it. So if people want to come and protest policies, be it municipal, provincial, or federal, if they want to, you know, say things, voice their opinions in hateful, racist, misogynist, Islamophobic ways, that is their right, until it crosses the line of hate speech, and that's a whole separate conversation. The challenge that we have right now, members of this committee, is we have no processes in place to account for the safety of our citizens on public property by not having them in a licensing regime. So if a group, a paramilitary group, wants to show up here in military fatigues and act in a paramilitary way that is contrary to the peaceful assembly of residents in our community, then we have no mechanism to trespass them. By licensing them, we will require that they cease and desist acting in this paramilitary, security-like fashion. And that's the only thing that I'm trying to be very clear about. I am not trying to limit their expression. The charter already does that with R versus Keegstra. And those are things that will be, I'm sure, pursued in the months to come as this trend continues. And the freedom of assembly is also a peaceful assembly. The freedom of association is quite prevalent, but it's all limited under Section 1. And that's what we have to be very clear about, and that's what's before us here today, is to ensure that those that are providing a security detail on public properties are licensed. And so, for instance, we had a long conversation around Hess Village. So through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Adi, or anybody from planning and economic development, in order to operate as a security company in nightclubs or restaurants, can you please explain the licensing regime that happens there? Do you have to be licensed, or can I go and be a bouncer tomorrow?
So through the Chair, the licensing bylaw for certain class of business licenses, of which nightclubs will be one of them, does require security provided and requires that those security guards be licensed under the, I can't remember the name of the provincial act, but the provincial act that licenses security guards.
So we have a framework that is applied to certain segments. My suggestion is that I believe, for $160 million a year at 20% of our budget, the Hamilton Police Service is more than adequately able to provide, within their existing framework, the maintenance of the peace, the maintaining of the peace in these public assemblies, and that these paramilitary organizations that are kind of extrajudicial in the ways that they approach their work and in... they approach their work and in oftentimes crossing over into extreme far-right, I won't even put a paradigm on it because it could be any groups. But for the three percenters in particular, they have a history of stated violence. There's well-documented news reports. You can check out Vice and see the direction that this particular militia is going in. We need to respond to the crisis. And I'll say through you, Mr. Chair, that at the Board of Public Health, we had 13 risk assessments. You'll remember at that time, I asked very straight, where is security on there? And I'm not clear that we have done everything we can in the crisis response. Mr. Chair, the crisis response is as follows. What did you know? When did you know it? And what did you do about it? And so as a council and committee, knowing the information, knowing the trends, knowing the potential for violence, we know that to be true. My concern is that by delaying this, and I'm already feeling quite personally about this, that it's been delayed in not having the full report back that would provide us with details as my original motion stated, that we're still left in the lurch. And should there be an event that has escalated violences from protests and counterprotests, then I will go back to this committee and say, we had the information, we tried to bring something forward, and some folks wanted to wait. And so if we're going to license, you know, a pub or a bar, understand that disorderly conduct can occur, then I think we should license security details only, not the assembly, that's for the police and the charter, but security details acting in kind of non-regulatory paramilitary ways in this country. So my motion is to extend a licensing regime for security details in our seat process through public events on public property. And that way, should they be acting in a way that is not peaceful, then we can revoke their license and trespass them. Right now, we can't do that. So I think it's pretty clear in terms of my motion. If there's any additional questions, please feel free to ask.
Counselor Marula, first time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to staff, my understanding is the security firms are licensed under the province, and you can't be a security guard without being licensed, and you can't be a security guard and being paid for it, or even can't be a security guard without actually working for a firm that is licensed provincially. So could we not take the road of, I guess, a simpler road and simply state that any security detail must be a licensed security firm in Ontario if they're hiring a security detail? So through you to staff, can someone elaborate on, just on the fact that the licensing regime already exists and it's a provincial mandate? I'm not sure why we're trying to rewrite a policy for that.
Staff?
So through the chair, all security that's hired from the city of Hamilton, those security firms do need to be licensed under the Private Security and Investigation Service Act of 2005. So those are security details that are hired from the city of Hamilton. So my understanding is based on the motion or the request of the Counselor Green is third-party users of the space that are bringing in their own security aren't licensed. And I'm understanding that that's the requirement, that we bound them by a licensed security firm.
Right, so that's in essence what's being asked through this motion? Oh, then so be it. But I thought that would be our protocol to begin with. Why would we not have had none of that asked? Just out of curiosity.
Staff?
So through the chair, in the incident of July 29th, we weren't aware of the security detail that was on site. If there was a requirement for security that came through facilities or through the city, our requirement would be that they be a licensed security firm.
Okay, so in essence, this provides direction to staff to ensure that within the application process, that they seek out a licensed security firm for security detail. Okay, so be it. All right, thank you.
And no further speakers. So the motion's, oh, second time, Counselor Whitehead?
Yeah, I certainly get the...
Yeah, yes, I assumed that on the seat application, when you felt that there was a requirement for security, that it was automatic that it would be licensed security. Now I'm hearing that distinction isn't made in the seat application. So in that context, I'm supportive. But again, the unintended consequence is there are a lot of small organizations, whether it's autism or, I don't care what the organization is, would have to take a cost burden hiring a licensed security. So help me understand how we impose those costs on smaller organizations that may want to have access and have the right of public assembly on our forecourt?
Through the chair, some clarifications required here. Not all events that are booked require security, but there are events that are sensitive in nature that do require security and are those events. And based on our numbers, it's probably less than 1% or 2% of all the events that are being booked.
So it's a discretion of staff through this process, and I want to make sure that this is not a blanket approach that may put unfair burden on very small organizations that wish to have a voice and draw attention to their particular causes. The last thing I want to do is create a financial burden for them to do so. What I'm hearing now is there's a discretion exercised, there's a threshold applied. That criteria, I wouldn't mind seeing in regards to how you make those determinations. And I'm looking for those answers now, but hopefully in the subsequent report, if we're going to require licensed security for the permits, we could have joined to it. What the criteria would be before we would consider imposing those additional costs of the security on those organizations, but certainly the intent and principle now is clear to me, and I support it.
So moved by Counselor Green, seconded by Counselor Aiden Johnson. All in favor? Any opposed? Opposed? None? And I'll give you the chair back.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the support on that motion. We do have before us item 6.1, which is the Hamilton Waterfront Trust statements. I do, however, have a note that the mayor is on his way here. He's... He is here?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. He may have just arrived. He was stuck at the 403 in Waterdown in the bus, so I'm not sure if he just walked in.
Pinch point. It's the pinch point at 403.
Yes, he may have just arrived.
Okay.
Maybe give him a minute to...
There is going to be a presentation that's here. Maybe for the purpose, because I didn't see him come in, if we could, maybe just move discretion to have item 8.1, discussion item, brought forward.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We also need to still receive...
Thank you.
Item 5.1. And rather than receive item 5.2, your motion will replace received.
So we have a motion moved by Pearson, seconded by, oh, we got the horse call from Counselor Whitehead. All those in favor? Carried. Counselor Partridge, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I don't want to miss the opportunity, since it was raised about being stuck in traffic in Waterdown. I don't want to miss the opportunity to just point out that it is 10:15 in the morning, and I have been going on and on and on for eight years about the traffic and how bad it is in Waterdown, and it is absolutely becoming even worse this year and particularly since the summer. So I don't want to miss the opportunity to just one more time say it around this table. Notice the time, the traffic is horrible, and that doesn't change. Thank you.
I just have to compose myself. Excellent, so we are on point now for item 6.1. I'd like to call upon Werner Plessel, Executive Director of the Hamilton Waterfront Trust, and Mr. Ed Brink, the External Auditor from BDO Canada, to speak to item 6.1. Oh, yes, Counselor Jackson, would you or would you like me to? Please do, yes.
And I believe the chairman of our waterfront trust as well, Bob Charters, is part of the delegation. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you very much. I recognize Mr. Bob Charters.
And former Counselor Bob Charters as well, pre-amalgamation.
Oh, yes, thank you for that.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, if I could just say to my colleagues, if you recall, this meeting was scheduled for October 4th, but it was important that the External Auditor be here. Unfortunately, my wife is due for surgery today at 3 o'clock. I will be leaving shortly after 11 because I've got to get her there for pre-op by noon hour. So I just wanted to state that upfront, that that was scheduled three months ago. This meeting was for two weeks ago, but I just want to say that upfront. I think everyone around the horseshoe knows my feelings in terms of the relevancy of the trust working in conjunction with the city moving forward. Thanks for allowing me that, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for that. We do have on the list Counselor Farr on the speakers list. Counselor Jackson, if the time permits, would you like me to put you on the speakers list? No, okay. Thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Perception and reality can be two very different things, and today, we would like the opportunity to try and bring forward to you the reality of the Hamilton Waterfront Trust. Thank you for this opportunity, for HWT to respond to recent comments made here in council chambers and in the media. Times have changed, and a story no longer has a shelf life. With the internet, a false or misleading story can continue forever. An article can reappear on internet searches long after the record has been corrected, and nobody has any responsibility to state that it's been corrected. With each following article, perception can be a little bit more distorted. Don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting it's the media's fault. I believe the media is to hold all in the public forum accountable. HWT will try and crack some of the falsehoods. No one at Hamilton Waterfront Trust is a city employee. HWT has not been tasked with a $140 million project, which includes residential development. You also see there is no shoddy bookkeeping. The board members are all volunteers. To suggest a forensic audit is offensive, and you better be prepared to back that up with some significant evidence to suggest why. Board members receive nothing for their involvement, other than the pleasure of knowing we are serving our community and by our efforts, there are more and more people discovering and enjoying the waterfront here in Hamilton. As a volunteer, I take exception to the comments so carelessly made, and I'm appalled that people can make such statements without the simplest of research. On top of the current insult referenced has been made to false accusations, never proven, just innuendos. And most are crafty enough to suggest they're not saying there's anything criminal going on. This is an insult to all present and previous board volunteers. People have been led to believe that HWT is a drain on city tax dollars, that it receives funding for annual operations, and that the HWT loses money on those operations. That is not the case, as you will see from our presentation made by our Executive Director, Werner Plessel. He'll give you all the details in his presentation. HWT is focused on creating people, places, places for all people. HWT is not a residential developer, but recognizes the importance of public space for residential communities. There is really nothing that anyone can do to encourage growth and improvement of lifestyle other than simply provide good people, places. Hamilton's past and future have and will be directly tied to our great physical elements, and in particular, our water. HWT has been moving forward on our plans to keep us on a solid financial footing. Strategic planning has and is continuing as HWT separates our business operations from our consulting and project management opportunities. Today, we report that our progress continues. I'm now going to have Werner Plessel, our Executive Director, provide his overview of what HWT has accomplished. Werner?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, I just want to give you a brief overview of the highlights of some of the things that the Waterfront Trust has been involved in in the past 16 years, focusing on some things that happened last year, calendar year, and also some things in the future. As you know, most of the activity that the Waterfront Trust is involved in surrounds Pier 8. This is Pier 8, a landform created by the Hamilton Harbor Commission back in the 60s, and this is what the landform looked like prior to the settlement agreement between the city of Hamilton, the federal government, and the Hamilton Harbor Commissioners. So it was a warehousing shipping area. This slide shows the western portion of that pier. All of the lands now owned by the city of Hamilton, all of Pier 8 and the western portion. The initial development was by Parks Canada to develop eight acres of property to construct the Discovery Center. And to the top of the slide are some of the activities that the Hamilton Waterfront Trust has developed over those years. The Hamilton Waterfront Trust was created by a deed of trust which came out of the settlement agreement. In November 24, 2000, initially, the trust received $6.3 million in capital funding with a list of projects they should undertake. The board reviewed our mission statement a couple of years ago, and this is our new mission statement. "We make it possible for everyone to use and enjoy Hamilton's waterfront." "Hamilton Waterfront Trust is a leader in providing developments designed to enhance the waterfront experience and promote easy access to the water's edge within its beautiful surroundings." And we summarize that in our tagline, "Connecting You to the Water's Edge." Over the last 16 years, the Waterfront Trust has developed a number of projects, and I'd be willing to talk to anybody about this list. But up to now, the list is extensive, there's about 40 projects on them, and up to now, we finished about $22 million of projects, and there's a number presently underway that we're working with the city on. So the total will be over $40 million. Some of the projects that we've done in the past, and many of you counselors would be aware of them, is the Hamilton Beach Trail, 8.5 kilometers trail, probably one of the most used trails in the province, and it gives you a fantastic view of the province. And also, I think it ties a lot of the beachier community together when this trail was open in 2003. The immensely popular Hamilton Waterfront Trail from Princess Point to the beach, sorry, Princess Point to Bayfront Park was opened by the city in 2000. The trust extended that trail from Pier 4 Park to Pier 8, which is another four kilometers of trail. So there's 11 kilometers of new trails developed. And part of those developments, we use city standards for them. They're multi-use trails. In most cases, they have lights on them. And part of the cultural part of it, we do provide art features, one of them being Pebbles on the Beach and the other one being Rafaga on Leech, which is probably one of the most photographed areas or sites in the city of Hamilton. Another component, a large component, the Waterfront Trust assisted in was redevelopment of the former Lakeland Pool on the beach strip. It was closed for over 20 years. So the facility was taken out, a new pool was put in, a community center and banquet center, and views from the waterfront, both out into Lake Ontario or across the harbor from the light house. Windermere Basin, these lands were transferred to the city of Hamilton as part of the settlement agreement, and the Hamilton Waterfront Trust was involved in the remediation of 13.8 hectares on the north side of that basin, which is now public green space and used by bird watchers, fishermen, and a lot of dog walkers use that area. To the south of it is where the label is Windermere Basin. That was a subsequent project undertaken by the city of Hamilton to develop that environmental The HWT center, that used formerly called the Discovery Center, operated by the federal government until 2010. They would average about 20,000 visitors to that building annually. Parks Canada decided to sign or close that center, so the waterfront... Parks Canada decided to sign or close that centre, so the Waterfront Trust signed a 45-year lease starting in 2010. And we've, up to earlier this summer, had a restaurant occupy the major part of the building. A small portion of the building is still used by Parks Canada staff. We also have a meeting room in there, used by a lot of people, and also the patio in front of it, and a state-of-the-art stage area with 65 seats. Here's a list of some of the operations and events that we've undertaken over the last 16 years. I'm going to just quickly go through them in pictures. The Williams Fresh Cafe, operating since 2004. The Waterfront Scoops since 2007, and Waterfront Grill since 2011. Waterfront Attractions, we've been operating the Hamilton Tour Boat for 14 years, which gives people a view of the western end of the harbour. Hamilton has over 500,000 people. It's amazing how many people haven't seen the harbour from the water or the land surrounding the City of Hamilton, and this is a good way to do it. And it's amazing how many people come out and say, "Wow, is Hamilton a beautiful, green city?" And this is one way they've been able to do that. The Hamilton Harbour Queen, operated by the City of Hamilton, now presently operated, still on the harbour as a private operation. The Waterfront Trolley. The Waterfront Trail from Princess Point to Pier 8 is seven kilometers long. That's a challenge for a lot of people and families, so the Waterfront Trust actually designed and constructed two trolleys. And for $6, very inexpensive ride, you can ride for about an hour and 15 minutes to see all of the waterfront, a city-owned waterfront. We also, more recently, have developed the ice rink, which sees thousands of visitors every winter for three months. One of the unique things we do for the ice rink is we have a Learn to Skate program. Anyone who has children and skating, where do you have access to skating? How do you learn? So one of the things we have is we have skate rentals, and we have a Learn to Skate program. You can go to one of the rec centres or ice surfaces through a private club and spend 350 bucks to learn how to skate. We have a program for $50, you learn how to skate. And it's very much used by citizens in Hamilton and possibly a lot of Northenders. We also now have a Waterfront Trails bike rental facility where different types of bikes are available to use on the trail system. Events, we've worked with a number of groups. We did Wing Fest for three years. We have music on the waterfront for the past eight, nine years. Hamilton Harbour Fishing Derby, that's been going on for 11 years. We give away 1,000 fishing rods to children under 12. We get up to 5,000 people attending, so probably up to now, we've had 40,000 to 50,000 people attend that morning session. They learn about fishing. Ministry of Natural Resources are there to give displays. We have 150 volunteers. Every day now, I see kids coming out with a fishing rod that they got for free last year, 10 years ago, and they're still providing access to the Hamilton, and a new form of recreation for some of the Northenders, anywhere from Hamilton, and a lot of the new immigrants. We assisted the city with the Two Tall Ship visits, both in 2013 and 2017, where there was over 100,000 people went to see the tall ships. And there's a number of other activities. We work with different partners, including the city's special events office. We have community outreach programs. Before the warehouses came down last year, there was a number of ugly buildings. So we worked with school groups, we had 200 classes. We provided the panel, the art supplies, and the students drew up, painted up what they thought Hamilton's waterfront is, or what it could be. Those panels were all taken down when the buildings came down, and they're stored by the City of Hamilton. The Learn to Skate program I've indicated. Also, we have a stage as part just beside the Rafaga statue, between the ice rink and the water's edge. And that stage is used by a number of groups throughout, primarily the summer season. One of the things we do is music on the waterfront. Every Thursday evening, a free concert where we see thousands of people participate every This is the city's website, the city's strategic plan from RV Future Hamilton. And the community priority number five, under Built Environment and Infrastructure, the key directions, and under Public Spaces, it says, "Build a vibrant waterfront with green space and attractions for locals and visitors to enjoy." I would think the Hamilton Waterfront Trust has contributed to that mission the City of Hamilton has. How have we contributed? For 2016, we've got statistics there showing how many people visit the waterfront and participate in those activities. There's over 500,000 visitors in 2016. Some of our, and as you know, we are primarily an outdoor facility, so depending on the weather, this was a rainy season. Some days, we'd have more, other days, we'd have other issues. A few years ago, we lost all of the December skating because of the warmer ice conditions. But over the last five years, we have seen at least 2.5 million visitors to the waterfront. And I would think that's probably one of the busiest recreational amenity destinations in the City of Hamilton. What else, what does that bring? Well, first of all, it takes staff to manage that facility. So our payroll for 2016 was $1.24 million. We have 25 full-time employees. Three are involved in the administration. The other 22 are deal with operations, whether it's the property maintenance or Williams Fresh Cafe. And we employ over 105 part-time seasonal positions. Tremendous location for students to get employment and go out and meet people and discuss the future of Hamilton. Where did the Hamilton Waterfront Trust money go? I know I presented a list earlier of $22 million. How is that split up? $6.3 million is the additional funding. We do not receive ongoing funding, capital funding, and projects. The trust invested $5.4 million in capital projects that are now owned by the City of Hamilton, City of Hamilton infrastructure. There are $1.1 million invested in the Waterfront Trust-owned infrastructure, like the trolley, the Hamilton Harbour Queen, the Hamiltonian. So the total investment is $6.5 million. In addition, the city does pay taxes. I don't think, and there's recreation centres pay taxes, so we pay taxes to the city and rent. So from 2012 to 2016, the rental or the tax bill is $951,000. This is the detailed breakdown of where I came up with those numbers. Again, the top picture shows what it looks like now, and the bottom picture shows what it looked like 16 years ago, before the trust came along. I think the $2.5 million over the last five years shows that the Hamilton Waterfront Trust is contributing towards the city's mission on the waterfront, is providing amenities. For 2016, the total revenues were $3.38 million. 75% of those revenues came from the business units, the trolley operation, the boat operations, the skate rental, Williams, et cetera. We have a couple of contracts with the City of Hamilton. The past two years, we received summer and winter funding for the ice rink. So in 2016, it was $307,000. And then the next component is percentage of the capital projects, and that varies from year to year depending on what activities take place. The expenditures are $3.355 million. So EBITDA is our earnings before interest and depreciation, which was a term that Counselor Ferguson asked us to use in our presentation, shows a net profit of $28,000. We have other costs, amortization, legal fees, so our overall deficit is $258,000 for Our revenues are split between the various operations, and of the two operations, the outdoor rink on the left side and the waterfront development, those are the ones that are funded 100% by the city, and they represent about 25%. For the waterfront development, there's a management fee that the Waterfront Trust receives. The other funds go directly to consultants that pay for the service they provide. And yet, we manage that project as it proceeds. This slide shows how the expenses are distributed. Again, the percentage from the city goes to those two components. Currently, the City of Hamilton and Waterfront Trust has relationships in a number of areas. So under the Hamilton Waterfront Trust deed, the trust provides the city with an annual audit of financial statements, and that's why we're here today. We will present those financial statements. The City of Hamilton also provides board members to the Hamilton Waterfront Trust for various period duration. We have a number of operating agreements with the City of Hamilton. First of all, we have an agreement to operate the Waterfront Trolley on the trails. We have the Waterfront Outdoor Ice Rink Agreement, which council approved this past summer, is a new agreement, I think it's a 10-year agreement. And then we have different based agreements, event-based. So we have the Winter Fest that takes place the last five years, or we have Tall Ships, so we partner with the city in hosting those events. We also have the management agreement that was signed a few years ago, and we undertake a number of projects in that area, and there is a 10% management fee for those projects. And the last is that we have leases on 47 Discovery Drive, which is Williams Fresh Cafe area, and 57 Discovery Drive. The Waterfront Trust has a 45-year lease on that property, which was signed by Parks Canada in 2010, and in 2015, that land was transferred to the City of Hamilton. In terms of waterfront management agreement, the City of Hamilton, a number of years ago, undertook a master recreational development plan for the West Harbour. This plan was prepared over a number of years, and during the consultation program with community groups, Counselor Bob Bettina, who was on our board at that time, asked the trust if we could review the plan and prepare a plan. So that was in 2008. So the Waterfront Trust prepared this plan. The reason I show this plan is because this was recently, I think it was last September in 2016, endorsed again by council. So this is a plan that council is using, and I think it's about $140 million of development. This plan doesn't include Pier 8. Pier 8 is just outside it, and there's another million dollars used for development. So the Waterfront Trust prepared this plan, working closely with our board members over a three-month period, and staff we had, and this was done at no charge to the City of Hamilton. And eventually, this plan was approved and is being built now. So if you're on this property, you can see the docks are all finished, and the breakwater, and they're being done by the waterfront office led by Gavin Norman. The Waterfront Trust has undertaken a number of projects, and has just signed an agreement to undertake additional projects. So some people suggest, "Why is the Waterfront Trust doing it?" First of all, we were the authors of the original plan. Project team is led by myself, Eric Hess, Rick Martin, and Ray Harkness, and together we have 150 years of park waterfront development projects. Some of the projects that I was involved in and the team were involved in was the 50-point Marina, done in 1981, '82, Confederation Park redevelopment in the early '80s, Wild Waterworks, Pier 4 Park, 1993, Bayfront Boat Launch Ramp, 1992, Pier 4 Park, Bayfront Park, sorry, I repeated, Pier 4 Park, Hamilton Waterfront Trail, Princess Point to Bayfront. In my opinion, I've been a Hamiltonian for 65 years. I was born in Hamilton, and I think that's one of the most unique features in Hamilton, is that Waterfront Trail from Princess Point. Not only because I was involved in it, but everybody can use it any time of the day and night. Great facility. The Hamilton Beach Trail, Lakeland Centre, Waterfront Trail, Pier 4 Outdoor Rink. Again, the vision was from the Waterfront Trust. It was Parks Canada land, the trust leased the land, and built a city-owned facility on what you would call private property. The trust didn't charge the city any rent for that property, so five years, the trust used that facility, that property, and now it's being transferred to the City of Hamilton. So not only do they own the land, they also own the infrastructure. And I said there are hundreds of projects. I can tell you, there's thousands of projects we've worked on throughout the city. Bayfront in particular, those are Bayfront Pier 4 Park with the initial waterfront development in the City of Hamilton, and happened in the early 1990s. So it won Engineering Project of the Year of 1994, and Excellent on the Waterfront Award in 1995 by the Waterfront Centre, the recognized operation consulting firm out of Washington DC. This work was undertaken and under the direction of a number of board members. So over the last 15 years, we've had the following board members. Ted Gill, Chad Collins, Bob Charters, Andrea Horvath, Mark Benasi, Sam Marula, Janine Stachow, Al Peckham, Bob Bettina, Jim Simba, Tom Jackson, Jason Farr, William DeRuder, Sandy Shaw, and Ernst Eberhard. I personally would like to thank that group. For 16 years, they provided direction to me, service to the City of Hamilton, and this work was done without enumeration in thousands of meetings. Here's what Pier 8 looks like. I think the city has a fabulous vision to expand and grow the waterfront from this area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Plessel. We have on our first-time speakers list...
Oh, just before we do that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ed Brink to our auditor to present our financial statements.
Yes, yes, sorry, if I could just interrupt you for a second. Yes, Counselor Jackson?
You didn't introduce him.
I do see the auditor present. Counselor Jackson, we will allow the magnanimous introduction from Mr. Charters to the auditor to walk us through step by step, I think was probably the crux of this conversation.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Counselor Jackson.
Mr. Ed Brink from BDO.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, councillors, I count it a great privilege to be able to speak with you here as a lifetime, as a lifetime Hamilton resident, to be able to speak before you in the council chambers. This is a great privilege, so thank you for that. I understand you have the financial statements before you. As was mentioned, I am Ed Brink. I am an assurance partner with BDO, and I have been the auditor for the Hamilton Waterfront Trust for the last five years. I've been asked to present the financial statements, specifically the December 31st, 2016 financial statements. They are before you. I will walk through them. Now, you people are familiar with seeing budgets and schedules and financial statements all the time, so I won't go into a lot of depth. I'll go at a fairly high level, but I will focus in on a couple of points that I think are important for all of us around the table today to understand. So we're going to start on page two, the Independent Auditor's Report. It's the page noted as page two at the bottom, the third page in your package. You'll see that this Independent Auditor's Report is the one page that we, as the auditor, provide in this financial statement package. You'll see the bolded headings there. There's the auditor's responsibility, management responsibility. You can see management responsibilities in the first bolded heading. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these consolidated financial statements in accordance with Canadian accounting standards for not-for-profit organizations. The auditor's responsibility follows that, and it shows that the auditor is responsible to express an opinion on these consolidated financial statements based on our audit. And how do we do that? We perform procedures to obtain audit evidence about the amounts and the disclosures in these consolidated financial statements, and we focus in on the completeness, the existence, the accuracy, and the valuation of the numbers and the disclosures in these financial statements. You can see our opinion paragraph... You can see our opinion paragraph at the bottom. Always a good conversation to start out with a clean audit opinion, and that's what we have here, as we have had in the past. In our opinion, the heading led by opinion, "In our opinion, the consolidated financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the organization." And it's key to understand the framework under which we are reporting. And these are the guidelines, the framework that we are required to maintain. This would apply for all not-for-profits, all charities. It is the Canadian accounting standards for not-for-profit organizations. That determines what we can and cannot include in the financial statements and the parameters that we follow in order to complete our work.
Can I just ask a point of order to the presenter?
If you could just maybe put the point of order here, and then we'll determine if it's a point of order...
Well, I just want to know what my interest rate is on is the 2016, because there's a series of them in our package.
Yes, sir. Yes, councillor. December 31st...
Just through the chair, if you could, please.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't even hear the point of order. What was the question?
What page is that?
Oh, that's perfect. Thank you. So, has it been clarified? Okay. The report's before you. It's right in front of you. Thank you.
So, just for clarity, we will be speaking about the December 31st, 2016 financial statements. And I'm on, just moving on to page 3 now, headed at the top by the consolidated statement of financial position. And I should probably pause for a moment here and explain this consolidated term. This is the first time that we have included the term consolidated in the Hamilton Waterfront Trust financial statements. And that's because this is the first year that there are more than one entity included in this financial statement. In the previous year, there was just one entity, the Hamilton Waterfront Trust, which was a registered charity. In 2015, Canada Revenue Agency began to question their own decision to grant charitable status to the trust. That led to some discussions with CRA and a meeting with all parties present, myself included, to discuss their decision that they had made years ago to grant charitable status. And it was agreed by all parties to annul the charitable status of the Hamilton Waterfront Trust. This annulment was decided upon and agreed upon at that time, but was not processed by the Canada Revenue Agency's Charities Directorate until November 21st of 2016. Prior to that, in anticipation of that, there was a separate entity that was formed, that was created, and I'll speak about that in a few moments. But I do want to just park on this annulment a little bit and help people understand what that means. Specifically, annulment means that it is deemed to never have been registered as a charity. It means that from that point onward, November 21st of 2016, no donation receipts can be issued. However, it means all charitable functions, activities, and donation receipts issued prior to that date are all fine. No concerns with those whatsoever. CRA states that in their documents and in their letter to the Waterfront Trust, they state that the amendments generally occur when registration was granted by CRA in error, as opposed to an error being prepared or made by the Hamilton Waterfront Trust. There's a distinction made very clearly with respect to annulment. So, when that came about at that time, the Hamilton Waterfront Trust became a not-for-profit organization as it was no longer a charity, effective November 21st, 2016. And at that time, in anticipation of that, all of the business activities, specifically the Williams Cafe and the HWT Centre or the Discovery Centre, were carved out of the Hamilton Waterfront Trust and were put into a new company called HWT Inc. Now, this company had been set up in earlier, in 2016, but did not have any activity until the transfer of these operations, November 21st of 2016. Since HWT Inc. is a corporation, it's owned by the Hamilton Waterfront Trust, and its board of directors are the same directors as the Hamilton Waterfront Trust. From an accounting perspective, under the Canadian accounting standards for not-for-profit organizations, we are required to treat them as one and consolidate them in, hence the name Consolidated Financial Statements that appears at the top of all of the pages we're looking at here. Briefly, looking through the page 3, the Statement of Financial Position, you can see that the bulk of the assets are the capital assets. This is important to note that this is the undepreciated capital amount, so it would be the initial cost. It's down from last year because of the depreciation that's been recorded in the current year. So, total assets are $2,964,000. The liabilities are listed below that. We can see the breakdown, accounts payable. The largest liability relates to the deferred capital contributions. This relates to funding that was received in the past for the Williams Cafe as well as for the Discovery Centre, the HWT Centre now. Essentially, when assets are received for capital purposes, the funding relating to that also gets set up on the Statement of Financial Position or balance sheet, and then it gets recognized into income through amortization on the same basis as the underlying asset that the funding is being received for. So, again, you can see the total liabilities and then the total assets, sorry, the total liabilities and net assets relate to the 2.9 million. Over to page 4, we can see the Statement of Operations. The Statement of Operations and changes in net assets show you the total revenues. The total revenues are $3.38 million. That's a slight increase over last year's number. You can see the largest number is very clearly illustrated there. In the middle of the revenue column, the Williams Fresh Cafe for 1.5 million. That represents the total revenue earned from the Williams Cafe for the year. The expenses are listed below that. We can see a total of 3.355 million. That represents the total expenses for the year for the Hamilton Waterfront Trust. And again, the key number relates to the Williams Cafe, the $1,471,000. So, we can see that there's an inherent profit there by looking at the revenue for the Waterfront Trust and the expense for the Waterfront Trust. We can see the difference outlines what the profit amount would be. The next number is the excess of revenue over expenses before amortization and other expense. That's the EBITDA number that Werner just referred to, and I refer to that as income from operations. I consider that to be really, from doing what you're doing on an annual basis, how much profit or loss did you generate? And from a consistent year, looking at the past years as well, we can see profit of about $28,000 this year, $540 this year. That's pretty representative of the amounts we've seen looking back over the last four or five years. Then, what we look at are the items, what I would call below the line, and these would be items that are either non-cash or items that are exceptional and not in the ordinary course of business. And I think it's helpful for the user to look at operations and carve that out from the one-offs and the things that don't affect cash. So, amortization, you bought a capital asset, you capitalized it, you depreciate it over time. You're not paying for that depreciation, but it is an expense that gets reported on the Statement of Operations.
And as the chair, so there's been a couple of questions pop up, and I know that you have before us the report, and this is very important information. What we have up on the screen is just a photo. Would it be possible to walk through your presentation with the information you've provided? I mean, actually, on the screen.
Was it on the screen, Werner? I thought you had the handouts for everybody.
Yeah.
Did you have it on electronic?
Actually, I put the request in. Everybody can just settle down if they can put it up for the screen.
Werner, did you have it? Okay. That's correct.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, it is before you in hard copy only.
No, I appreciate that, Madam Clerk, but there's also people that aren't around this table who might not have a copy who are present here today. And so, the request, given that if we have it on a file, was just to put it up on screen. Now, if you don't have it up on file, that's fine.
That's correct.
But as the chair, recognizing this has brought a lot of attention, not everybody might have this in front of us outside this circle, I want to make sure you have the ability, sir, to be crystal clear in your presentation, to follow along line by line, because not everybody has experience with budgets or spreadsheets, right? Just for clarification... Sorry, sorry. I haven't recognized you yet. So, just to be clear, you don't have that presentation on a thumb drive?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we will proceed. If there are questions from time to time that arise around the table, please forgive me, I will interrupt you, and I will ask that you refer to it specifically. Councillor Whitehead, does that satisfy your question?
Yeah, I mean, the problem is that we got a report. I'm following the report. This is an addendum to the report that was on our blotter. So, and when you look at the packages that was in our report, they...
But you have found it.
We have it now.
So, we've resolved around this table?
But just for clarification, anyone, it's not in the package received or had part of our binder, it's actually an add-on.
Thank you. Councillor Marula?
Just quickly, we do have extra copies. If somebody is in the room that would like a copy, please raise your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Pearson?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, thank you. And just for clarification, we did receive it as an additional attachment or subsidiary, but it is also in the package. I found it in both locations.
Yes. And just for the clarity of this council, my comments were not just for members of this committee, but also members of the whole, and the media presence. So, just having the information available for folks is always good, and in future tents, when you throw it up on the big screen, everybody's great. So, please do proceed. I apologize for the interruption.
No apology necessary. Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I had just mentioned was that the income from operations was the $28,468. That's a key number that shows what actually happened in the course of the year. Comparatively speaking, moving to the right side of the column, you'll see that was $540 last year. We then talked about briefly the amortization being a non-cash item that is an expense that appears on the statement. And then, in addition to that, more the one-offs, the extraordinary or exceptional items that are not ordinary, would relate to the legal fees and the bad debts that occurred in the prior year relating to the tenant dispute. They were significant and caused the overall deficiency for the year 2016 to be $230,000. Over onto page 5, the page headed up Consolidated Statement of Cash Flows. This statement is fairly straightforward in that it really just focuses on cash. Where did your cash go? What happened to the cash amounts? And we see essentially about two-thirds of the way down the page, what I would call the cash flows generated from operations is the $115,745. That just shows positive cash was generated over the course of the year. The notes to the financial statements start on page 6 and continue for the next few pages. I won't go into the depth of all of the notes, but I will say that Note 1 speaks to significant policies, specifically significant accounting policies. And I think it's important to note that in our audit, we do test these policies. We perform various tests on the revenue streams, the expense streams, and the payroll streams. We take a look at the systems that are in place, test them. We also take a look at some of the controls in place and test them. Specifically, in looking at page 6, the second paragraph refers to the formation of HWT Inc. And then, in the three paragraphs below that, we talk specifically about the consolidation. We talked about that already, about the Hamilton Waterfront Trust and the HWT Inc. being consolidated together. That significant accounting policies continues over to the next page, onto page 7, where we see the capital assets. Again, the policy specifies the capital assets and the policy with respect to the depreciation, the inclusion of the capital assets, and the depreciation of them. Over onto page 8, we can see a little bit more detail, specifically with respect to the capital assets, the various types and classes of assets that are appearing in the financial statements at the end of 2016, both the cost and depreciation amounts with comparatives for the prior year. And then, in Note 4, right below that on page 8, again, there's reference to the deferred capital contributions. And again, these are the funding amounts received to acquire the capital assets that are being deferred over a period of time and recognized on the same basis as the asset that they were used to acquire. We end off with some commitments that are specific to the premises location, and then some accounting notes on the last page, page 9, with respect to the financial instrument risks. And those, Mr. Chair, are the financial statements.
Thank you very much, sir. We do have on the first-time speakers list councillor Farr, Mayor Eisenberger, councillor Partridge, councillor Ferguson, and councillor Skelly. Councillor Farr, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, just while we have that up there. One councillor quote on the radio, quote, "A history of not being transparent shrouded in secrecy." History of not being transparent, dot, 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 so there must have been more in there. Shrouded in secrecy, end of quote. As an accountant, and with your expertise on this and other charitable aspects or not-for-profit aspects of third-party auditing, would you feel that we are not transparent and shrouded in secrecy from a financial perspective, through you, Chair?
Mr. Chair, that's a, there's a lot of speculation in that question. What I would point to would be the audit report, which is the one page that BDO prepares that I sign. And that is a clean opinion under the Canadian accounting standards for not-for-profit organizations. As a licensed CPA, professional accountant, I can't sign that report unless I'm confident that the financial statements and the disclosures are presented fairly in all material respects.
Okay, thank you. On the annulment, so just so we're crystal clear, who annulled us? Through you, Chair.
Mr. Chair, the annulment letter is fairly clear. In fact, it's absolutely clear. The terminology that they use states that, let me just find it, right in their letter states that the annulment occurs when registration was granted by CRA in error. So, CRA proposed the annulment. It was discussed by the directors. It was agreed, and CRA effectively annulled their decision to grant charitable status, which was granted years ago in the first place. So, the answer to your question, I believe, would be that CRA annulled what they had already granted in the past.
So, the very organization that granted us the charitable status came back a little later and said, whoa, 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 let's annul. So, and also, to be clear, through you, Chair, effective November 21st, 2016, this annulment took place. So, did we, did you discover in 2016 and those remaining dates, any evidence whatsoever of the Waterfront Trust issuing charitable receipts after the annulment, through you, Chair?
Mr. Chair, no. There were no receipts that came up in our audit work that would have been issued subsequent to that timeframe.
Okay. I might have a few more for you. Appreciate confirming a clean audit, and just maybe one more time in brief, through you, Chair, clean audit as per the last five audits you participated in as a third-party auditor for BDO.
That's correct. That is correct.
Chair Charters, you opened passionately, as you have done in the, sorry, I have questions for Bob now. Thank you, Ed. Through you, Chair, you opened passionately, as you have done in the past. It's not common, but it's consistent. Every two, three, four years, we're here. And, you know, most of the questions, and you commented to this too, with respect to media, fair. You and I have been board members together for seven years. I think we have a very prudent board. We have a fiscally responsible board. I think we proved just how effective we've been with our history lesson once again here today, and we, of course, added to it since the last presentation. We don't always agree. Good board members don't always agree. Most recently, Mr. Chairman Charters, it was on the release of the minutes. Thirteen requests did come from a very good reporter, from the Hamilton Spectator. Early on, I suggested, no issue, absolutely, you can have them tomorrow, was the way I felt. I'm only one member of a board of four, for now, and you maybe felt differently. Through you, Chair, and it was certainly the subject of fodder and media attention for some months, and fair enough, absolutely. I was to say once again, fair enough, as we said, when we eventually did release the minutes, the day after our September 11th board meeting. Through you, what was your thinking as a board member as it related to the releasing of our minutes?
Well, my major concern was its precedent setting. I don't know of any other nonprofit organization, and the city supports and funds... I don't know of any other nonprofit organization, and the city supports and funds a lot of nonprofit organizations, and they're not required to do that. And I think in, in the final end, we came to the realization that we were going to go ahead and do it, but it is onerous for organizations to have to be able to keep their minutes in order for them to be released. And in our particular case, a big portion of minutes has involved in-camera discussion by way of, of the pending lawsuit and real estate issues. So, I mean, it, it's just a lot of work, and as a, as a person who's served on numerous organizations, I know that it's something that isn't normally done. And I'm just, from that perspective, I don't mind doing it and being open because we don't have anything to hide, but the reality of it is, it's very onerous for all organizations to do that. They're not required to, under any legislation, to do that.
And ultimately, we had that conversation, and, and we are going forward with, with the minutes, and we do apologize, at least I will, for it taking so long for folks to receive those minutes. Certainly, if you go, Mr. Chair, to most of other publicly funded agencies and to reference the point made by our, our chairman, I just think, we publicly fund the HBO, the Art Gallery of Hamilton, Theatre Aquariums, the Royal Botanical Gardens. Much like Hamilton Waterfront Trust, their website is more of a marketing tool. And the four I've just mentioned, of many, many others that you'll find on Hamilton.ca, have wonderful websites, they do a terrific job, better than Waterfront Trust's website, no doubt about it. What they also have in common with the Waterfront Trust is absolutely no minutes. And these are publicly funded agencies, the Art Gallery alone, million bucks, you know, these are much larger funds we're talking about with those four than, than the Waterfront Trust. So, anyway, Bob, you opened as well, talking about, I think you tried to make clear that we're not developing $150 million of waterfront. From a radio interview, and this is another quote from a counselor, quote, "Too much controversy surrounding the Waterfront Trust to simply rubber stamp approval of its authority and oversight to allow it to take on what will be the largest development in the city's history." Quote, "A history of not being transparent, shrouded in secrecy." Quote, "Why would you trust the trust with the largest development along our waterfront?" End quote. Quote, "I don't feel comfortable until we look very deeply into the history of the Waterfront Trust, saying, let's just give this organization to manage moving forward, it's simply too large a project, and it will require, I think, a different area of expertise," end quote. Does it, are you, when you made your comment to open, was it comments like these from an elected official that inspired you to try to make clear that we are not overseeing the $150 million waterfront development, through you, Chair?
Absolutely. It's not just those comments, but it's the comments of everybody else that writes into the Spectator and other organizations with comments, all based on that information. And it's completely, completely false.
So through you, Chair, the potential you feel is, when comments like this are made, public picks up on it, it can unfortunately lead to a sort of snowball out of control of misinformation, through you?
Absolutely.
Werner, through you, Mr. Chair. We have received, this sort of much began in late August at a GIC on a Friday. I remember driving home from a family vacation for that GIC, I was deputy mayor and I felt obligated, and I'm so glad I came home. And comments were made by a counselor in the GIC, and then subsequently on the radio afterwards. On the radio, Werner, quote, "Given some of the questions of the business practices of the Waterfront Trust, why were they automatically brought in as a partner for the Pier seven and eight projects?" End quote. Can you speak to that? Were we automatically brought in as partners? I seem to recall you being in attendance with the Waterfront Trust Subcommittee about a year ago, making a presentation, much like similar to some of the slides you presented here today, talking about the pedigree of the Waterfront Trust as it related to the capital projects over the many years, through you, Chair?
Through the Chair, Waterfront Development Committee, Subcommittee of Council, was formed a number of years ago, and I was asked, along with Chris Ferthieglund, to run through the waterfront development plan. Just see if I can find that document.
While you're looking for that, I should note, I made an error, that was the host of the show saying, given some of the questions, why were they automatically brought in? The counselor then said, quote, "Which is the reason why I raised the issue and put forward the motion at the last council meeting, when the trust came forward asking for approval to reorg and requesting expanding authority, autonomy, if you will, over the future planning direction slash control over the waterfront publicly owned lands, that was simply a request that simply couldn't go unchallenged." So, so that was expand, the host's comment was expanded on, and that was a direct quote from that August 31st radio show. Through you, Chair?
This, this is the master development plan that was approved by council, again, prepared by the Waterfront Trust, and I was asked to make a presentation during the summer of 2016 to the Waterfront Development Committee. And I think of the 157 million or so the city has earmarked for the waterfront, 140 is covering this plan. The other funds are for Pier eight. And at the committee, we were asked to do the presentation, and the committee, I think, a motion from Farr and Eisenberger, to formalize an arrangement with the Waterfront Trust in undertaking some of the public realm works. Up to that point, we had undertaken some, the initial servicing strategy, I did that with Chris Phillips, then we were doing some environmental work, but the actual implementation of Piers six and seven was discussed in that meeting, subsequently approved by council in, in the fall of 2016. And again, contract came to council this past summer endorsing, signing agreement for that. So the Waterfront Trust has signed an agreement to undertake the design and construction of those works.
Okay, and for the record, folks, that Subcommittee, West Harbour Subcommittee, goes to GIC, we have one today to approve, then it goes to council for ratification, and I'm certain, almost certain, I won't say certain, because there could have been an attendance issue, that that was actually unanimous. That decision on this project management agreement, this latest, was unanimous. It just as the 215 financials were unanimous, and everybody, everybody around this table voted unanimously to receive that 2015, this is important to note, I think. So, through you, Werner, that ultimately brought us to the point of managing the waterfront recreational master plan, Piers five through seven. And we receive, through you, Chair, as our 10% management fee, ultimately, is it 1.5 million, through you, Chair?
Well, the estimate for those current projects are about 15.4 million dollars.
Of a 150 million so far waterfront plan?
Yes.
15 million, not the entire plan. We're not getting 10% of 150 million, we're getting 10% through you, Chair, of roughly, approximately 15 million for this project.
Of the current phase, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
The 140 million covers the recreational area, so Pier seven, inclusive, I'm going east, that's about 140 million. We are doing a small piece we did on the beach, which is just wrapping up, I think it was about $150,000 study, just wrapping up, I identified earlier, and Piers five, six, and seven, so that's 15, so it's, it's in the order of 10% of the overall.
Great. You go to all the West Harbour Subcommittee meetings, I think you were at the last one. Through you, Chair, what was the city's fee, what was the project management fee for the city who's overseeing the Promenade Park, for example, the 7.5 million dollar Promenade Park, do you recall?
No, I don't, I, I, you know, in, in conversations with public work staff, I, I think it's in the order of 10 to 20% the fee, depending on projects, small and large, there's a range there.
I'll, I'll get clarity on that with staff later, Mr. Chair, it's actually, I think, 15%, but I'll, I'll get clarity, 5% more than the project management fee of the Waterfront Trust. So just on the comment that was publicly made by an elected official, the trust came forward asking for approval to reorg and requesting expanding authority, autonomy, if you will, over the future planning direction, control over the waterfront publicly owned lands, that was simply a request that simply couldn't go unchallenged. I have that, I, I mean, I have that correspondence to council, it came late summer, we, we, it could have come earlier. If there's any of you that are sitting on a border agency that's running at 100%, and you're doing a perfect job, please let's get together, I want to learn how. We're not perfect, God knows, we're not perfect, we're definitely under the microscope whenever we mess up, and we do mess up from time to time. But I see that page, that correspondence, we all saw it, it was in, in the GIC document. And anywhere there, are we, can it even be referred to as seeking autonomy?
I don't think so.
Allah, staff. Okay, fair enough. Anyway, through you, Chair, back to Ed, just to go full circle, and then I'll, I'll, I get others going here. I already asked about the annulment. What is the, through you, Chair, the Charities Directorate, Ed?
The Charities Directorate is the Division of Canada Revenue Agency that focuses on and administers and basically manages and oversees all charities. The Charities Directorate will receive on an annual basis, what's called the T3010, the Charity Registered Information Return for all registered charities. It will take that information and it will report on its own Charities Directorate website, a website, a CRA website, it will report certain financial information, certain key information, such as what the charity does, the board of directors, current operations, that sort of flavor of information. The Charities Directorate also will oversee questions with respect to specifically registered charities, whether they are in compliance or not. They will oversee and formulate audits and initiate audits of entities to assess whether they are still worthy of being a charity, a registered charity or not.
Okay, through you, Chair, so the government of Canada, do they make any specific requirements on the part of an annulled entity to post that annulment on their website, or put an ad in the paper, or scream from the rooftops? Through you, Chair?
No, the annulment process is one, as I mentioned, in which the, the government, specifically the Charities Directorate, acknowledges that they should not have registered as a charitable entity in the beginning. So it's a formal process whereby they will issue a letter and say, that is the notice of registration, not being annulled, on that date. Everything prior to that, there's no concern. At that date, the charitable status will be updated, or probably a couple of days after that, once the website is updated at the Charities Directorate themselves, they will update their own information. When you go onto the Charities Directorate website, it will show that it is no longer registered. So they take care of posting that information on there.
So in, in short, not that I'm looking for a scapegoat, through you, Chair, we were not required to publicly, there's no requirement, as issued by the Charities Directorate or otherwise in the government of Canada, to announce publicly an annulment.
That is correct.
Okay. That said, it's a perfect time to mention, well, nobody's perfect, I don't think anybody sits on a boards and agency, whether it's the Art Gallery of Hamilton or the Waterfront Trust, running a perfect show, we could always do better. What I have learned through this is, we probably should have. I think it's very clear that many people have suggested that we should have, notwithstanding we weren't required to, might have been a good decision, and that's the lessons you learn, and, and that's what you discuss as prudent board members, and we'll, we'll have to do that going forward. We'll have to do better going forward, no doubt about it. Any questions? Many questions have been asked publicly through you, Chair, and there have been a few statements made, there's a lot, and I'm not going to go through all of it, many have heard it, but I think we've highlighted on some of the more important ones that do demand and deserve some form of explanation, there's no doubt. There's others that I won't get into that I've heard publicly, and people have sent me and asked questions since the summer began, or the summer ended. But one was that I want to ask you since you're here, Ed, why are there no audited statements on our Waterfront Trust website as recommended by the CRA? I, I don't recall that, maybe I'm wrong, but through you, Chair, did the CRA ever recommend we put audited statements on our website?
I'm not aware of the CRA posting or requiring a posting of audited financial statements. There are many, many charities, and if you take a look at their websites, some will voluntarily post, there is no requirement that Canada Revenue Agency, through the Charities Directorate, makes of an entity to make available their financial statements, and really, that is because they receive the T3010 Registered Charity Information Return on an annual basis. And CRA takes care of posting the relevant information on their own website, which is accessible to all of the, all of the public.
Thank you. And finally, are we sustainable, through you, Ed, are we sustainable? Is Waterfront Trust sustainable?
Again, I would point to the audit report, I would point to page two of the audit report to say that there is a clean audit opinion. If there is what, what we would call, in the accounting jargon, the going concern, if there is a going concern question, or a question about an entity's ability to continue as a going concern, we would have to include that in our audit report, and there would have to be a note to the financial statements explaining that. The fact that that does not appear, that should illustrate very clearly my position.
Thanks. I'll have some questions of staff, Mr. Chair, at the appropriate time. I'll try to get confirmation on the project management numbers, what the percentages are in-house versus a current project versus our percentages traditionally on project management, and other questions I think I'm going to have for Mike. But for now, thank you very much, great presentation. It's always good to come and share what is really great news for the most part, but like I said, Mr. Chair, it's also very good to realize you can always do better as a board member. And certainly, I think it starts with our website, we'll have to go from what most publicly-funded boards and agencies do right today, run great marketing websites, and also focus, do that still, but also focus on our governance a little bit better, and we will, thank you.
Thank you very much, and at the appropriate time, I'll return to you once this has been received. On the speakers list, we have Counselors Partridge, Ferguson, and the mayor has removed himself, Skelly, and then Whitehead. So, Counselor Partridge, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and welcome, everyone. Thank you for the presentation. My questions will be mostly for Ed, please. So Ed, just to clarify, I think we've heard a number of times now that the Waterfront Trust is no longer a registered charitable organization. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. But they are now a registered not-for-profit, is that correct?
They are now a not-for-profit organization, correct.
Okay, so the word registered does not fit in there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. On page six of the December 31st, 2016 report that you just went through, on page six, which is the, the notes to the consolidated financial statement, my question is, about halfway down, it says, "The basis of accounting and presentation. These consolidated financial statements include the accounts of the organization and the HWT Incorporated. All significant inter-company accounts have been eliminated." I thought I heard you say, if you could just confirm, that the financial statements that we're looking at included the, all of the, the two organizations' financials, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So, the sentence, "All significant inter-company accounts" has, have been eliminated. Can you unpack that for me, please? What does that mean?
Absolutely, very good question.
Thank you.
What that means is that if there is a situation where the Waterfront Trust, which owns HWT--
Right.
--if it lends money, that would mean that there would be a receivable here and a payable here. And when you put the two together, they eliminate. The receivable and the payable wash against one another, so they get eliminated effectively when you consolidate and report one entity.
So where is that reflected in the statements?
That gets netted out--
It's netted out.
--and it becomes a zero. So the receivable becomes zero, the payable becomes zero, the two wash up against one another, so there's no effect.
Okay.
If I may, the, the purpose of a consolidated statement is to show the view of the combined organizations to the outside world, so eliminating any interaction between the two.
Okay, thank you, and I understand that, and I wanted to hear you say it and ask that question for those in the room who might want to have that unpacked a little bit. So, thank you very much for, for your question. We've talked at great length about the minutes not being on the website, largely due to the fact that they're not required to-- not being on the website, largely due to the fact that they're not required to be on the website by any organisation that the city funds. And that's not a question for you, that's just a statement, you know, that I've made. But I do want to say, I do believe that we need to have an annual update. So, you know, it would be helpful. The other organisations come in every year when we have our budget and do a presentation, and you know, and I think some of the statements that have been made out there towards the Hamilton Waterfront Trust, towards some of the board members, and even directed toward this council, I think they have unnecessarily tarnished the reputation of the Waterfront Trust. And I'm very, I'm very sorry to see that, because, you know, of all the work that you've done. But I think going forward, as the previous speaker said, we can learn from this, and by bringing information, like this is a very thorough presentation, and I think it is worthy to suggest that we have this every year, to have it on an annual basis, as do the other organisations that come in here. But I truly think that it is just reprehensible that the Waterfront Trust's reputation has been damaged in this way. But I thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Partridge. We have Counselor Ferguson, followed by Skelly and Whitehead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I also have some questions for Ed if I can. And Ed, the term EBITDA has been used, and just for definition purposes, it does not stand for earnings before I trick the damn auditors. It stands before earnings, before interest taxes and depreciation, correct?
Yes, and amortisation. The A is amortisation.
And depreciation and amortisation.
Which are really the same thing, correct.
Yeah, they are. Okay. And do most publicly traded companies, in your experience, measure management on EBITDA?
I am not a public company auditor. I tend to focus more in the not-for-profit area and the Canadian accounting standards. I would say that most profit-seeking companies, as a general comment, focus more on EBITDA. Not-for-profits generally do not focus so much on EBITDA.
Okay. And I ran a large publicly traded company, and that's what they always put, EBITDA and RNOA and NOA. But EBITDA was the measurement, because the others were extraordinary. Now, just on amortisation, which has an expense on page four of the income statement of $233,000. That is not a cash cost. That's a paper cost for income tax calculations, correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. And so the right thing to measure, they're showing a large loss when it gets publicly announced. But it's not a loss, because the $233,000 is not cash. And so thank you for confirming that. Now, the $96,000 for legal fees, the reason you put that, as you said, below the line, is, through you, Mr. Chairman, is because it's a one-off? Is that why you, it's a cash cost, but it's a one-off cost? And in your view, would some of that be recoverable if costs are awarded to the plaintiffs or the dependents on this situation?
I can't speak to that part. I'm not a lawyer. I don't know what the implications of the lawsuit or the settlement thereof would result in. What I would say is, yes, you are correct with respect to your EBITDA line being what I have referred to as the income from, income from operations, that that would reflect the true operations, and that the legal fees are not part of the normal operations, the normal ongoing operations of the Waterfront Trust. That's not their purpose for being. Legal fees are not part of what they are normally expecting to incur. Therefore, we're pulling that out and treating it as an additional item, an exceptional item, and really bringing it to light, if you will, that it's there, that it is a matter to be addressed outside of the normal scope of operations.
Okay. So the published loss of $258,000 is not a pretty inaccurate function. You know, somebody could argue the legal fees are a hard cost, but the amortisation is not. And I guess I understand that you can't comment on whether some of those legal fees will be recoverable as it goes through the litigation process. And the only other thing I want to point out, so they did make a profit of $28,468 using the EBITDA measurement. But also, I think it needs to be publicly pointed out that they generate cash from $130,000 in the year, and there's an old rule, the cash is king. And, you know, when you generate that kind of cash, that shouldn't go unnoticed. So I just, I wanted to point that out, providing I am correct in my analysis of that.
You are correct. The actual cash generated in the current year is $115,000, resulting in an ending balance at the year of $130,000.
Yes, thank you. Okay, that's all my questions now, Mr. Chairman. I do have some comments on the resolution, the draft resolution that's passed out, so I'd like to comment on that, on the speakers list later. Thank you.
I will most certainly do that, and appreciate the thoughtful questions and highlights. I now pass the floor over to Counselor Skelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, gentlemen. Earlier, we had a reference to rubber stamping some projects that the Waterfront Trust has been commissioned to oversee. And perhaps, Werner, if we could, if I could address this to you, Mr. Plessel? There's about $15 million in work at six, well, it's the Artisan Village, Marina Shoreline, the Boardwalk, and the Commercial Village. I believe that's around $15 million that we approved in July. Is that correct? Yep?
Yes, yes, that is.
And I will admit, I'm at fault. I didn't catch and certainly make, spend more time in asking more questions about it. I think it was passed with very little conversation and discussion. But one thing that I thought was interesting is, council approved it in July, but in the package that was presented, the work was actually, the contract awarded to Mr. Werner Plessel, Executive Director, is dated in May, months prior to council approving it. Is that common practice?
We were directed by the, sorry, staff were directed to negotiate some contract and some services in, I don't have the date here, but I think it was in September of 2016. So we've had some conversations and discussions. The actual paperwork in getting the contract signed is just being completed now. In fact, the chairman and myself signed the contract a few months ago. I have not received this signed contract back for the city. And yes, we have started some of that work already.
So in May, though, the, the letter that was included in the package was dated May, and yet it was approved, it says, "In accordance with council direction and consistent with the Hamilton Waterfront Trust City of Hamilton Project Management, the HWT has been approved to project manage water-related projects," and then it goes on to the Shoreline Rehabilitation, Boardwalk, and Waterfront Trail, Artisan Village, et cetera. But that is dated in May. It wasn't approved until July. And the reason I'm bringing this up is the rubber stamp reference. We had very little discussion, and this had already come to you prior to council having approval.
If I could just for a second, I see folks shuffling through their package. Can you reference the page number that it's on?
Well, the page, this is a reference in their own work today, the stuff that was provided today. It's a summary of expenses, expenditures. I have a copy of this from the minutes from council.
Oh, from the council minutes?
Council meeting, yeah.
Okay.
From, in July. I have a question as well. In your minutes that you provided, there are three references in the minutes, November 10th, 2015, December 8th, 2015, and January 12th, 2016, that refer to the trust engaging Booker and Associates to conduct a study on the operations and finances of the trust. What were the findings in that report?
I think the two that I can speak of is to continue the operations of the amenities on the waterfront, providing services to the citizens, and explore more opportunities to partner with the city in management projects of the waterfront development area.
Do you have, is a copy of the report available for council?
Yes, I think if the board makes it available, we can get that.
Can we get a copy of it? Thank you. The trust is making money, but you mentioned in your presentation through the chair that we get about 500,000 visitors to the waterfront every year. And for all intents and purposes, the café is really the only eatery on the waterfront. Why is it not generating more revenue? What can, what is, why can we not see more revenue from the café?
I think one of the things that we are unique, and that we are a destination, but we are a seasonal operation. So in the wintertime, it's hard to make a go of it. One of the other things is, if you look at the history of the operation, is it's tougher to run a business, like the waterfront, Williams Fresh Café. The Williams Fresh Café, when we started, our menu items were very unique. Now, Tim Hortons, McDonald's, the big players in the field are making exactly the same kind of food we are. So it's a challenge, and we are in line with the other waterfront, or Williams Fresh Cafes in terms of the profit margin. So we all like to make more, and that's our goal, is always cut our expenses and increase our revenue. One of the things that we are unique, there's about 26 Williams Fresh Café operating that are very isolated from weather conditions. If any of you been down there, our sales are one-third on a sunny day versus a rainy day, and that is very hard to predict a week or week and a half in advance. So we try to control our costs, and our major cost is labour. But if we do a schedule Friday for the following week and it rains the next Friday, we are very careful in cutting our hours, because obviously all employees like to keep as many hours as they can, but we're looking at the profit, the bottom line. So it's a juggling act, and we're always going to improve that and continue to.
You truly are a destination business. I'm not sure if you can answer this, or, Mr. Charters, I don't know if you were even on board at the time, but a number of years ago, and the auditor mentioned, as he brought us through on the importance of providing financial statements that are supported by an auditor, but back a number of years ago, it was actually back in 2007, there were financial statements audited by Guy at Wood and Moffitt, and that audit resulted in an adverse opinion. My first question to our auditor is, have you ever issued an adverse opinion, and is it considered a serious designation? And, or sorry, to our accountant. And my other question is, was this ever presented to council? First question is, can you explain what an adverse opinion is? And is it something that you issue, that is a common designation?
Personally, I have never issued an adverse opinion, so it is not very common. I've been in practice for 24 years, and I have not issued one. Nine years as a partner, I have not issued one. Essentially, an adverse opinion generally results from the inability to form a final opinion. When I was speaking, I mentioned that our goal as an auditor is to form an opinion. Are the financial statements fairly stated within materiality? And if we're unable to get there, an adverse opinion generally says that we can't, we can't get there, so we can't formulate an opinion.
Thank you. The management letter that was attached to this particular audit listed a concern about a possible conflict of interest. And the reason I'm raising it is, it concerned an individual who was on the board of another city agency, providing funding to the Waterfront Trust, and then receiving a contract personally from the Waterfront Trust. It was a possible conflict of interest. Was this, again, brought to council's attention, and what has been done to address this particular issue?
Excuse me, what year was that?
That was back in, the audit was actually 2007, and it was done by Moffitt. Sorry, let me get the name.
I just, for the fairness of the presentation and what's before us.
What in Moffitt? The reason I'm raising it, and I know where you're going.
But if I could just finish, and you might know, but it's important for the people that are presenting. What's before us is the request to have 2016 statements brought forward. Now, we're going back 10 years, and we're talking about personnel issues, and I certainly don't want to suggest that we go on camera. I don't think that's appropriate. Nobody's been named.
It's a public document, by the way.
Fair enough. And if, and if...
My question, if I may, just continue with this line of questioning. The reason I'm raising it...
You can put a question through the chair,
Through the chair.
And then I'll determine whether or not we move forward in this.
Through the chair. The reason I'm raising it is, it was, the same person is mentioned in minutes as of last year, minutes that were put forward to, brought forward to this council. And my concern is, what was done, and is there a continued conflict of interest? That is my concern.
So the question is, in your opinion...
So the question is, do you recall this, this particular adverse opinion? And was it presented to council? What was done about it? Because I see a similar reference to minutes provided in the last compilation of minutes that the trust provided to us.
Okay, so that's, it's, this is not, this is not a page referenced in the report. I get a sense this is a page referenced in research documents Counselor Skelly has taken from the public forum and publicly made available. So you are free to answer this question in any way you would like, sir.
First of all, has, was council receive it? Yes. All audit statements were sent to council, and all audit statements were received by council. So if there was a statement in that document, as you stated, that was received and seen by council.
Thank you. I don't know where it is. I'd like to find out if it did come to council, if we could verify that one. And also, my next question is, what was done to address the issues that were highlighted in that particular document, in light of the fact that there is a similar reference in the minutes? And you probably have an idea of what I'm referring, what I'm referring to. No?
You have to explain more.
And so, you know, with that being said...
I'll take this offline.
No, yeah, and I certainly appreciate the background work and research that has been done to ask questions that are, you know, pertaining to this presentation that's before us. But it would also be, I think, good in, to have council also have those documents. So if there's anything that you have,
Which I can provide, yes.
That you want copied, that we can pass out just for our own understanding. This all feels very familiar in terms of the, yeah. So I'll leave that.
My next...
The floor is, the floor is still yours, Counselor Skelly.
Thank you. My next question is, is the new restructuring that you're requesting, can you explain the two organisations, and why you are asking it to be restructured to a, the original Waterfront Trust and HWT Inc.? How do you distinguish between the two? What are their responsibilities, and why are you asking for this restructuring? Through the chair.
First of all, we're not asking you for restructuring of the corporation. I don't believe that it ever came to city council when we incorporated as a charity. We are an arms-length organisation, and the reason that it was done is, as has already been presented by the auditor. He explained what we did, and we operate as still one company.
Sorry, this is right out of our, therefore be it resolved that the Hamilton Waterfront Trust has restructured to form two organisations, the original Hamilton Waterfront Trust, which will continue as a not-for-profit, and the new organisation, HWT Inc., which will operate and manage specific components of the former operations.
I'm sorry, is that in the package?
That is...
For the, for the, I think...
What came before council.
For the courtesy of the members of the committee...
On August 3rd, 2017. That's what triggered this whole discussion.
So I appreciate that, Counselor, but you have a series of documents that I think, for the benefit of the members of this General Issues Committee, if you would like to present them, that we can make copies, and provided they are, in fact, public domain and not naming anybody in a way that might be outside of freedom of information, I think they need to be shared so that we can follow along with your line of questioning to ensure that it's in keeping with the presentation that's before us.
I'll then wait until after the next presentations and have copies made.
You, I think we can do them right here, if you want.
Yep, but you go ahead, and I'll get all the paperwork.
I appreciate that. I think folks would like to catch up with where you're going. And you'll, you probably will have lots of time. We have Counselor Whitehead up on the floor.
I'll make sure that you've got additional time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming. And I want to introduce my questions with the context that there's been a lot of hoopla around the Waterfront Trust based on a narrative that's been reported on many fronts, including the local newspapers. They're painting a picture that's not all that flattering in respect to the operation of the Waterfront Trust. So I certainly supported the opportunity for the Waterfront Trust to come forward here today, and for us, and for you, to provide clarity on these issues and change the narrative. So this is really the opportunity... So this is really the opportunity and my questions that I'll be asking is aligned to clarifying the narrative for the waterfront trust. So again, I want to thank you. I guess the first question, and this could go to anyone who wishes to answer, probably the chair could probably answer it, but I think to understand context in, at the granular level, we need to understand right from day one, what was impetus for the introduction of the waterfront trust? So can I ask the chair, who will probably all know all too well, based on his former council years, how we got there and how, and why it was formed?
Yeah. The waterfront trust was formed actually as a suggestion from Minister Cops. And it was her suggestion that instead of giving a cash settlement to the city, she would put money into this trust in an attempt to get the city and the port authority to work together. That part of it failed. The, I, I'm, as far as I'm aware, a lot of the issues that were issues then are still the issues today. They're around planning. There was to be an exchange of planning staff as all part of the settlement. None of those things actually transpired. So it was set up specifically to do that and to improve things at the waterfront. Each year, we were to bring our audited financial statement to council and to the port authority and ask the city and the port authority for their list of what it was that they were going to do with regard to improving the waterfront. Neither organization seemed to be all that interested. So we continued on our way and doing the very best we could with the money that we had to develop parts around the waterfront. And we had an option and we had an option early on. We could have done the same kind of development that the city did down at the Harborfront Park. Put the grass in, put the trail in and be done. And we could have done that for the whole six million, $6.3 million, whatever it was, and walked away and been done. And what we felt is that Hamilton needed something more than that. We needed something to attract people to the waterfront, to use the trails, to be there. People complained that there was no place to get a coffee. And so we started up a little coffee shop. We never in our wildest dreams thought it would turn into a big coffee shop, but we did a little four-stool coffee shop for takeout coffee so that people could have coffee at the waterfront. And that, that expanded into, hey, we're doing okay with this. We think we can expand this building. We put some more money into it and expanded it. So everything kind of grew out of that, but it wasn't really designed to be an organization that had six and a half million dollars in an account and each year we just took the interest off and spent that. Our goal was to get something significant done on the waterfront right away.
So I appreciate the context because it leads nicely to the next question, but unfortunately, Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask this of your auditor. Understanding that this was a fairly new organization at that time and you have done audits on fledgling organizations or aware of it, in your experience as an auditor, is there always some growing pains with new organizations? I'm looking to you because you're, I see you as an independent at the, at the front. That's the only reason I'm asking you that question. I'm not necessarily from your direct audit or accounting, but as an independent individual and your understanding of those organizations, would you agree that in your experience that there are many fledgling organizations that have to find their, their feet and will go through some bumps and, and challenges in the beginning?
In, in my experience, excluding my experience with the waterfront trust, because I have not been involved with them from the outset, but in my experience in clients that I deal with and in situations I do encounter, yes, it is fair to say that the startup terminology is appropriate. And in the startup phases, which tends to vary in length of time, most companies have to build a client base, build an infrastructure, build the ability to do their operations. So that usually does take some time in order for them to get to the point where they're running efficiently.
And, and clearly there are going to be some bumps and bruises on the way.
There is a lot of learning that takes place for most people who start out their businesses or start out new organizations in the first year or two, correct?
Appreciate that. I just want that perspective because I had the opportunity with an independent individual standing in front of us to flush that context out. My next question is, well, certainly the next comment slash question is that the, obviously the waterfront trust evolved and not only involved in regards to making a location and destination location, but evolved in the sense that it's now managing recreational-type operations and, and plans for the city of Hamilton. Is that correct? Probably to the chair.
Yes.
So there's, it's also been an evolution. Now, the, the process and some of the narrative out there have identified a number of issues. Obviously transparency has been one of those things thrown out there. So I'm going to just, and the reason I feel it necessary to take them head on because I think this is the opportunity for the waterfront trust to provide absolute clarity to change the narrative that you're a very competent organization that have had some bumps on the way, but are operating in good faith in, in an accountable and transparent way. So I think, I'm hoping through this exercise, we can provide that clarity and provide that level of confidence. I certainly, I know it's around this table, but certainly to the broader community and I hope you bear with me. So the, the next question I have is, oh, procurement. So there's, there's been a lot of these, what I call whisper campaigns or, or issues through those are, see themselves as critic of the waterfront trust, that your contract and procurement exercises are questionable and aren't to the standards of the city. Now, understanding that there was an evolution, at one time there was no tax dollars in the waterfront trust. You had the $6 million that you identified and now you've moved over to and transitioned to an area where you're actually receiving some tax dollars. In that context, can you provide the evolution on your contract and procurement process?
Well, our, our current policy for doing that is that we aren't going out and procuring people for the contracts that we're doing for the city. That's done in conjunction with the city. I'm kind of looking at Warner to reinforce that. That's not something that we're doing. We're not putting out the tenders and doing that kind of stuff. The city is. And originally, we did. And when we did put out contracts or something like that, we'd always go for multiple bids if we could get them and advertised in the newspaper that we were doing something. There was likely contract work that was done originally when we were doing the original trails that we may have picked a contractor that we knew was very capable at doing something that we wanted to have do it. But beyond that, we've always tried to, to do it as though it was an RFP.
So the reason I ask that question because there's, there's two transitional points. There's the point where you had the $6 million. There's a point now that you're managing and, and receiving city tax dollars and there would be different standards. So in the period of time that you had the $6 million, there was no obligation to follow the city of Hamilton's procurement policy because you weren't accountable to the city at that time. Would that be a fair statement?
Yeah. Warner's just reminded me, we've always tried to follow the city's policy even when we had the original $6 million. So you'd have to give me a specific example of what it is that you're asking.
So when you're seeking out contracts, would you do it in the sense of an RFP or would you do it in the sense of getting three quotes?
Through the chair, it depends on the value of the contract. If it's less than $10,000, we followed the city guidelines.
So those would be like three quotes?
Yeah, so anything over 10, we'd sometimes advertise. Over $100,000, definitely be advertised and, and get quotes for that work. A lot of the projects we undertook were supervised and coordinated by waterfront trust, waterfront trust staff, employees, and we'd hire subs to undertake specific trade items.
Was there any sole sourcing that took place during that period of time?
I don't recall unless we worked together with the city on a particular component or something, but I don't recall that we did any sole sourcing outside consulting with the city.
So for the public record, you tried to adhere as much as practical in that period of time where you weren't receiving any city tax dollars to the city practice of quotes at a certain financial level and anything over that you would actually put out a request for proposals?
Yes. In fact, there was only a few projects where we were 100% funded, like the tour boat, the Harbor Queen and things like that. All the other trails and that were joint projects with the city. So we followed city of Hamilton purchasing practices.
So does that apply to the contracts on the trails, you know, the construction? That work would have been, followed that same process?
Through the chair, yes.
So for public record, on the procurement side, waterfront trust did not sole source to follow the city processes in regards to the, the thresholds for quotes versus RFPs. That is now clarified for the narrative, for the public narrative.
That is correct, through the chair.
The next questions I have then is, the other issue is transparency. Now, I think we've already had the, the auditor talk about the fact that a lot of the, your audits and CRA applications automatically go at some point to their own website. And I know we often have this discussion at the Police Services Board, how, how could we be more open, transparent? You can always look at better ways of putting information out to the general public. So in that context, and understanding the, you know, the demands of this community, is there an evolution going on within the board to do the best you can to get as much of the information out into the community?
Yes.
And how, and what plans have you put in place to do so?
Well, we've already released our minutes, which I don't know of anybody else that has. We would be leading edge, I guess. Beyond that, we're, we're looking at what other things we can do. You have to bear in mind that the, one of the issues that we have is this whole issue around financial statements and what financial statements look like when they come from an auditor. And the fact that it shows the depreciation when depreciation isn't actual dollars, it's, it's a number. When you start putting that out to the general public, you have the general public always reacting the same way as, oh my gosh, they've blown all this money again. And like the big hit for us was the Harbor Queen, not the, the Hamilton Harbor Queen. When we finally got rid of it, we had to take a write-down on what we'd actually paid for the boat. That money was spent years and years and years before then, but it looked all of a sudden like the loss happened right that moment that we transferred the ownership. So there's issues that are created by the information that we're presenting. We have to present it a certain way according to what nonprofits do, but the information is then taken to mean something else to everybody else in the general public. So those are issues that will be issues not just for us, they'll be issues for other nonprofits and it'll be interesting to hear as others are asked to do the same thing, how they respond to it.
And, and the, the Harbor Queen was an opportunity to be a destination location. It was a good faith and, and I would say, I'd suggest, from certainly the board's perspective, a prudent investment to meet that objective. And then over a period of time, it was clear that the revenue generating and the risk based on changes with the, the federal government as it pertains to those kinds of ships, the risk outweighed the revenue stream and you made a decision.
Yes, but the reality is that ship is still operating in Hamilton Harbor. And if the waterfront trust had not done that, there'd be a lot of people in Hamilton that have never seen Hamilton from the water. So it's a good thing. It accomplished what we wanted to have accomplished. Our goal never was, no place where we said to make sure that you make money and, and at the very least, make sure you break even. Nobody's ever said that. Make sure that you don't lose any money.
Well, I mean, we, we don't make monies on arenas or parks either. So let's be clear, there is a function in regards to making Hamilton a great place to, to live and following our mission statement. So I appreciate that comment. The, the other question, well, I was on the transparency piece, we sort of got sidetracked with the Harbor Queen. The, you have a website, is that correct?
Yes.
And is there discussions with the board and how much more you can push out through that website for access to the general public?
Yes. And we can do, we've already admitted that we can do more there. The issue is that we have a very small staff and they're tasked with a lot of things right now. So it does involve restructuring and getting some more money. We are pressed continually on this issue with the lawsuit. And while that's under, while that's under, as it goes on, we aren't in a position to say, hey, let's go out and do all these other things. If somebody wants us to do that, we're more than prepared to do it, but it does cost us some money. And it isn't as simple as on our website, just adding another document on the thing. So.
Appreciate that. So I just wanted to cover that you're making efforts to push more out based on your financial limitations, staff limitations, you're doing what you can because you understand the call to put more things out into the public. The other question, and I'm going to ask this, you already addressed the minutes, you addressed the, you mentioned a lot, that moment, but I know we can't get into detail because of the confidential, staying at the macro level. The question to the auditor is that he was talking of, I guess it's the provincial standards, accounting auditing standards and so forth, and, and indicated that from a material point of view, you had no issues on the financials as it was presented. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you help the layperson and the general public understand what is material versus what's non-material within the operation?
Very good question. Materiality is the threshold that an auditor will establish at which they will recommend an entry be made. Mainly it is because they feel that is the threshold at which a user of the financial statements would be impacted if that number was not adjusted for. So that's essentially why we will establish a materiality at the outset of every single audit engagement. We will accumulate any potential differences that our audit team will verify or will determine in the course of their audit compared to what's recorded. A great example would be foreign exchange. We would maybe use a slightly different rate than a client would use. That would be considered to be an insignificant difference, not likely material. We would track that and record that as an unrealized adjustment that we don't recommend making because it's below what we would call our material threshold. Now, if we encounter a sizable error or a difference, that would be a different story because now we think that if we exclude that, that may negatively affect the user's ability to make a decision based on the financial statements. So in that case, if it is exceeding that materiality threshold, we will work with management and request that that journal entry or adjustment be made in the financial statements. Does that help, Counselor?
Well, when you, so when you make that threshold, is it possible then that things that aren't, I can't use the word material anymore because we're trying to make this contrast or to distinguish.
Trivial is what we use.
But there, there'd be, there could be areas of very little dollars, very little impact that wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily be covered through this type of audit?
That would be correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we understand and the general public understands these processes. The, the question I was going to ask and you, oh, the other one I was going to ask and I think is pretty clear now is the charitable status. And I think this is a question now, because I think Counselor fired a very adequate timeframe on that area, but I want to make it clear in regards to this narrative that this is not the first time, and I'm not going to put words in your mouth, maybe I need to hear from you, and it's not pertaining directly to the waterfront trust. But I think on occasion, in other organizations, the, the CRA who makes these decisions. organizations, the CRA who makes these decisions probably have made these kinds of decisions with other organizations. This is not unusual, is the point I'm making.
I did have the opportunity to attend the meeting when CRA met with the Board of Directors. And when CRA, when the CRA representative learned the date of the original registered charitable status being granted, they made the comment that around that timeframe, there were a number of others that were granted charitable status that they are now revisiting.
Thank you. So again, the context is everything. And the narrative again that's being out there is that are suggesting that there is a lack of confidence in the organization, the governance structure as it provides the great amenities and space on the waterfront. And I think that once we provide a greater level of context in each and every one of these subject matters, it really puts those issues to bed. And that's the purpose me ask the question because, I mean, from day one, I've been on this council observing the waterfront trust. And I've seen where, you know, you sort of cringe a bit because you realize that it's part of the growing pains, but there's no bad faith operation in the context of exercising their duties and responsibilities. And I think that's the narrative is that this organization is achieving something. They're achieving it and it can always be better. Yes, there's warts, but the narrative that's being told is not actually reflecting what is actually happening and what is actually being done. And here we have an opportunity to provide the context. So I wanted to do that. And those were the primary pieces. And I want to again reemphasize, and I think Bob Charters
Agree.
That there has been hiccups on the way. Would that be a correct statement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Whitehead, we have Counselor Collins on the first time speakers list, followed by Counselor Skelly on the second time speakers list. Counselor Collins, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for the presentation here today. A good review in terms of where we started and certainly where we've ended up, at least to date. I do have a question in regards to the lease that was referenced earlier. And I bring it up in the context of when the lands were leased from the federal government, they still had a presence on the pier. And I don't think anyone anticipated that we would, at least at the time when that lease was signed, I don't think anyone anticipated that we would resolve our longstanding lease issue with the Port Authority. And so there was an expectation that the pier essentially wouldn't be developed until 2025. We know that council through motions here gave direction for us to end the long-term lease the port had with the city. And that's now left all parties in a situation where you have lands that are under a long-term lease now with the city because we inherited that when we assumed ownership of the pier. And I believe you have two parcels that sit on two of the blocks that we're now putting out to an RFP or an RFQ. I can't recall the, what process we're going through for that. And Brewers Marine sits on a developable parcel of land that the city will be soon advertising to the general, to the development community. Actually, we're through, we've started that process. So my question is, without going into confidential information, what discussions have taken place in terms of trying to resolve that outstanding issue of city can't offer these parcels to the development community without resolving its issue with both you and Brewers Marine? So are we making progress and headway on that issue?
We are. We have continually mentioned that that is a source of trouble for us. As you will recall, when we made our presentation in the past, we outlined to council that we were going to be repurposing the center and converting it into restaurants and hopefully getting a tenant. Since that presentation, we had a tenant and it was able to help us carry the property, carry our lease. Since then, there's been a lot of things that have happened. And we had also planned to build two buildings. In fact, Counselor Skelly came with a proponent at one point looking at putting a building on the waterfront edge. So we've had gone out to proposal calls for two specific pieces of property that are now in your plan considered institutional. But in your plan, there's buildings now in what is the parking lot. That's a problem for us, and we need to somehow resolve that. And we have been meeting on it and hopefully there can be a resolution of it very quickly.
Including the parking aspect as well?
Yes, because without parking, there isn't a whole lot of hope that we're going to be able to keep operating.
Thank you for that. I was out of the room when I, apparently a comment was made about 2005 of which I can certainly try to assist. And the benefit we have is that, Bob, you were a board member at the time when you were here. I do want to confirm that council has, in follow-up as well to Counselor Partridge's suggestion, we have attended annually in terms of providing audited statements for every year of our operation.
Yes, that is correct.
So they have all been submitted at some point in time in the past?
That's correct.
And if I could take you back to 2005, I do recall the whole issue as it relates to, we had change in staff at the time. And we were late certainly submitting to the city. And as was referenced, again, I was out of the room, but I did hear from my colleague in terms of a reference that was made. We did have an adverse time. And it wasn't an issue in terms of we were out money. It was an unreconciled accounting issue that we resolved by 2006. Although at the time, if I can remind everyone, when the board received our 2005 audit in 2006, we sent it back to be resolved with our staff and with the auditor. Can I confirm that that was in fact the case in 2006? I know I'm asking you to go back a decade, but I've read articles in certain publications that have a different slant on history.
I think at that point, we ended up changing auditors and there was an issue. And I guess one of the things that really happens is every time this issue comes up, somebody alludes to something on a piece of paper that they have, but they don't show anybody what that paper is. And I certainly don't recall that the issue was that we had a contract with an employee and something. It was around the whole idea that they couldn't resolve some of the numbers that were there. And there was a disagreement between the person doing our books and the auditor. So if there's some, if the other counselor has something else, it would be helpful to actually see that in writing.
Of which in 2006, those issues, if you look back at the audit
Yeah, we're clean. Absolutely.
So I do, I did, I have read articles back and we're probably going back to 2007 or 2008. And I do recall that, you know, there was a local publication that talked about who we hired and who was under our employ and the relationships between the people who worked for the trust. There's no secret in terms of who our lead people were at the time. We only had five or six full-time employees. Those people were regularly on the front page of the newspaper. They met with Spec Editorial Board, Werner, Christopher Theeglin, Eric Hess, who built our trolley. These people have all been front and center. And so I know that there were people at the time who said, well, you know, how could Chris Theeglin and others work for the trust when they're on the Conservation Authority and they're building a trail through Confederation Park? As I recall, conflicts were noted at the time for those people who sat on boards and disclosed that information. So I raise that in the context only because, as you just mentioned, Mr. Chairman, those issues are raised from time to time. And I don't think it's any secret in terms of who we hired and what functions and duties they performed for the trust. Some of those people on contract, they weren't full-time employees. They were involved with construction. So when we went out to look at purchasing a trolley, we found that the costs were astronomical and we hired Eric Hess, who built the trolley. And I think there was a great expose on Eric and his achievements. And that trolley has served us, the community, well over the years. And same with Chris, Chris Theeglin, who later became Chair of the Conservation Authority and has done good things in this community, really was the person with the bulldozer building the trails for us. So I, I get the political part of it in terms of trying to make or connect dots in the past in terms of who worked for the trust and those connections. But all of that is certainly public information and those names are out there. And I think their accomplishments on the list that you provided to us are many. And of course, we had other people who worked for the trust who did good work as well. So I think I had one more question, but I subsequently forgot it. But I thank you for the presentation today. If I do remember it, Mr. Chairman, I would reserve the right to go back on the list.
I appreciate that as I appreciated Counselor Skelly taking a moment to, yes.
And I do recall that those same articles generated an integrity commission complaint of which I did go through and of course, answered all the questions at the time. And so I don't discount that there's an element of politics involved in all of this. And I'm just sorry that our staff, past and present, had to go through that as well.
Are your comments complete, sir?
I think so.
Okay. So I just wanted to move forward to say that I appreciate Counselor Skelly for giving us a moment to collect the information. I would however like to caution you, given that out of all the documents, we've only received one. And my understanding, one of them was marked private and confidential. I don't want to get as the chair into any space where we are contravening the Freedom of Information Act.
No, no.
I don't want to be slipping things in, you know, around and questioning.
Mr. Chair, our counselor just referenced a document. He says it has been made available. I'm working, the clerk can't find them right away. So we're going to look to see if we can find the documents that were provided back.
Okay, just a caution.
It could be, I'm not referencing that. I'm going to see if we have had it. It's been, the comments have been made several times that it's public. It was brought to council. I'm just going to find them.
And I could help with the date because I know that because we referred our 2005 audit back, it was actually presented with our 2006 and '07 audits all at the same time. And so we had one big presentation, as is the case today, to council. And those documents, I believe, are part of the public record.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yep.
Before, I circulated this last document, and this is the one I was referencing regarding the restructuring. Can you explain what you're asking and why you are asking the HWT to be restructured in this particular format? Please, through the chair.
The request is item E, that the Hamilton Waterfront Trust Board of Trustees hereby request the HPA and the City of Hamilton approve of the new appointments processes for the trustees.
It's number A, through the chair.
This was covered off a little bit in the auditors report when he talked about the legal separation of two companies. But perhaps if you'd like to recapture this and resummarize it in a way that might be more understandable.
Counselor, I believe letter A is what you're referring to. And the reference is to, the HWT has restructured to form two organizations. The original Hamilton Waterfront Trust, which will continue as a not-for-profit, and a new organization, it's actually a new corporation, HWT Inc., which will operate and manage specific components of the former operations such as Williams Fresh Cafe. It's also including the Discovery Center, HWT Inc. Essentially, as a result of the annulment process, the meeting that we had with CRA suggested that profit-seeking businesses or profit-seeking operations should be carved out. They highlighted the Williams as the classic example. We also identified the HWT or the Discovery Center. That's why those two were picked to move out because they could not be in a not-for-profit as well because their profit-seeking doesn't really fit with a not-for-profit. So they were carved out and put into a corporation, the HWT Inc. Does that answer your question?
Yes, through the chair. And what is the management structure overseeing both entities?
Currently, it's the same.
It's the same? And same management agreement, et cetera, through the chair?
How do you mean the same management agreement?
Well, the management agreement, an agreement we have with our current manager. So he would oversee both entities under the original agreement, his remuneration.
The job has not changed.
And so the agreement
The legal structure is all this changed.
If we could please take a moment, we're going to put all comments through the chair. And we'll go through these questions. If there is an HR matter that is pertaining to identifiable people that for whatever reason, you know, relates to the remuneration and others, you can deal with that as the chair, but let's make sure we keep it this way and this way.
So all that we're asking in the resolution is for the reconstitution of the Board of Directors of the waterfront trust. We're not, we're not asking about approving two corporations or anything like that. That's just our corporate structure.
Through the chair, maybe I'm misinterpreting this, but I think you are. Are you not?
Perhaps if you would like to reframe the question through the chair?
Through the chair, are you not asking for approval of restructuring?
No.
You're not?
No.
It has to be approved by council, does it not?
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't? Okay, thank you. Thank you. My last question, and it's to Mr. Charters. Would you, we have undertaken a number of value for money audits. And we've had one recently with Hamilton Housing. We had our own consultants. Our internal auditor looked at our consultants, hiring, practice of hiring consultants, procurement, et cetera. And as a result of these audits, I think that the city has really is much richer because we gain a lot of insight. We gain a lot of valuable information that makes the city more effective, more efficient. Would you be adverse to a value for money audit?
Well, I would certainly want to discuss that with the board and before we come to some kind of decision on that. But from my perspective, value for audit is kind of a provincial process that, you know, like the auditor general at the province does it with Ontario Hydro. And I think there was actually an article in the paper today about infrastructure, Ontario, stuff like that. I think that it's likely a little excessive and that to a certain extent, a lot of the things that take place are within the context of our auditors. Our auditors will advise us on some of those things. But in order, if, and I guess I got to really figure out here, what are you saying the measurement is of the waterfront trust? Are you saying it's our financial profitability? Or are you saying that it's carrying out the mandate of the waterfront trust because they're not in a total alignment, those two things? You can't run a coffee shop and allow people just to sit there all day if they want to because it's their one chance to go out.
I think that's a Starbucks model, actually, but carry on.
Through the chair. The reason I'm bringing this up is because, and perhaps, and I understand what counselor, one of the counselors was referring to earlier, but I do believe that we are about to, not you, but the city is about to undertake an extremely important redevelopment of our waterfront. And it will forever change the complexion of our waterfront and forever change the image of the city. And this is going to be part of the transformation of our waterfront. What you are entrusted with will have, will play a role in terms of where this city is moving forward with our waterfront development. You do have some jurisdiction over where we go in the future with city-owned properties. I also, and yes, there has been unfavorable media attention and you can't believe everything you read. But when we have this many questions, and I have questions as an elected official who I believe I'm beholden to the taxpayers of Board Seven and the taxpayers across the city, that I can assure them that we are getting value for money. And I don't know if we are, I don't know if we aren't. I'm not qualified to make that decision. We have an auditor who has done this in the past in-house and he looks for these kinds of things. And I've actually raised this with him. You know, could you perform a value for money audit? And we discuss the scope, et cetera. And it's to truly find out, is this the type of, is this, is it time to bring the project back in-house? Or are you doing such a phenomenal job, we'll give you a gold star and say, go forward, this is the way to go. And I don't think it's an unreasonable request. And I don't believe don't think it's an unreasonable request. And I don't believe that there is a negative to it, if we can find and identify, through the Chair, efficiencies to make, to reassure taxpayers that we're doing the right thing and that we do respect their hard-earned dollars.
So the question was posed, it was put, it was answered, it's being put again. Feel free to answer it as you wish.
Well, I don't, I don't think I'm changing my opinion on it at this particular point. But I do feel, I do feel a little bit affronted by that suggestion, when it's also cloaked in misstatements that were made by the same Counselor publicly.
Sorry.
The words forensic audit.
Yes.
I've actually heard myself.
Yes.
Somebody said forensic audit.
Through the Chair, please.
We will keep the conversation through the Chair.
Okay.
We're not in a process of cross-examination.
Right.
Although I am familiar with that process, we're not doing that here today. If you'd like to answer the question, that'd be great. If the Counselor has further questions, she will put them, and you will have further answers or not.
Okay.
My question is through the Chair. Would you be, you're...
I've answered the question.
So the answer is you would not...
Respectfully through the Chair?
I've answered the question.
Okay. So...
Through the Chair, thank you.
There is the opportunity, Counselor Skelly, like all things around this table, to move a motion. If you'd like to see that happen.
I would love to see...
That is the direction, but just so that we're clear, this is an arms-length agency. You cannot direct them accordingly from this position.
I understand that, Mr. Chair.
As of yet.
Through the Chair, I would love to, but I am not going to be able to get a second or for a motion to do a value-for-money audit, which I believe is the right thing to do.
So we've heard that, and again...
That is my question to you. I've heard your response. Thank you.
Are those the end of your questions, Counselor Skelly? Okay, we do have on the first-time speakers list, Counselor Eisenberger, followed by Counselor, sorry, Mayor Eisenberger, followed by Counselor Marula.
Thank you. And I'm not, I don't have a great speech to make. I'll make that a little later on when we deal with the motion. But I do, I think this is worth clearing up. And I think we need to kind of put this issue to bed. So the way the Waterfront Trust was set up, and we can go to Bob, you're probably most familiar, back in the day, you and I were there. And I think Counselor Jackson and Collins and others were part of that whole negotiation process. The Waterfront Trust does not answer to the City of Hamilton. I mean, you report to. We've requested a reporting mechanism, and that's fair and reasonable. But technically, the way you're set up, you're an independent body that makes decisions based on the mandate to bring more activity and value to the waterfront.
Yes.
With the $6 million that was originally set up.
Right.
Right. So, you know, folks that kind of make the equation that you're looking here for approval on structure, you're not, you're not doing that. You passed this resolution at your board to go in this direction, to separate the two incorporated divisions.
Right.
The only thing you were asking us to consider and look at was the actual complement of the board.
Right.
Which is one issue that we do have some authority in.
Yes, you do.
So I think that's, that's an issue. And I think, and I don't have no further question on that, Bob. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the work the Trust is doing. It is, though, it does highlight the issue in many people's minds in terms of who does the board report to ultimately. And that's a, I think that's part of the challenge that we face here on an ongoing basis. And it's not, it's not a bad thing. It's just an issue that has never been resolved. And may never be resolved. Maybe that's, I mean, your independent entity that is doing the good work. If we all agree with that, then it moves forward. But it's still been an issue. That was an issue right from the very beginning. Because ultimately, you don't necessarily report, maybe back to you, Bob, you don't necessarily report to the federal government. You have a separate charter. And you don't necessarily report to the City of Hamilton.
That's right.
Correct? Okay. So I think, I think it does point to that issue. And I think it does, in the minds of some people, that we are working in the same space, in the interest of the taxpayers as a whole, providing value to the waterfront. But that unanswered question in terms of, you know, does the city have influence over the trust? Through their Counselors, they do, but certainly not through this body and through any other charter that exists. So I think that's pretty clear. Okay. Thanks, Bob. I appreciate that. And I appreciate being able to ask that question. I think that needs to be clear out in the public's mind. It is an issue that might warrant some attention as we go forward. Certainly, looking back at, you know, I think, I don't think it's an issue at all. But I think it needs to be clear that that's the way the structure was set up. That's the way it is today. And unless that something changes into the future, that's, that's the way it's going to continue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We have on the first-time speakers list, Counselor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me start off by, I think, I think that the issue surrounding the Waterfront Trust, and I've been analyzing this, because it seems like it's an issue every term, for the last number of terms, is the uniqueness and the creativity that actually led to building the Waterfront Trust. So just keep in mind, it was given $6.3 million. And with that $6.3 million, they leveraged $6.3 million. And we have, as a city, been able to develop over $20 million worth of projects. We should be applauding the Waterfront Trust, not scrutinizing them to the level of almost embarrassment. So when you look at the so-called red ink, and I think the quote about perception versus reality is really relevant, it's, as it's been noted by the auditor, it's related to depreciation, not literally cash red ink. And it's accounting jargon, right? So on paper, it shows that. But in reality, it's related to depreciation. Also, look at what they've built. Not everything that they've built has a revenue source to it. So you look at a trail as an example, you're not creating revenue from that. So obviously, it's going to, it's going to hurt the bottom line. But that's what to do for, is to create amenities to improve the quality of life and bring people, and bring people to the waterfront. So I really need to emphasize this, because we've gone through this, I don't know how many times, I think three or four times in the last 10 years. And last term, the staff reported back about the in-house option, and analyzed what that cost would be. And it was astronomical. It's a non-starter. So I, for one, I'm very vocal about bringing certain elements in-house. But the fact that we've done this before, the fact that we've analyzed it, we've concluded that that isn't, is a non-starter, because we just can't afford it. And that what we get for value for our dollar presently is in our best interest. And that because it is a convoluted, very unique, creative program, again, we should be applauding it and not disparaging it. And I'm somewhat frustrated, but with my frustration, oddly enough, this time, I'm calm with it, because it's almost to a point where I'm numb. Because it's almost, it's a groundhog day, right? Every term, we're dealing with this. And it's, it's got to stop. So maybe what we should be looking at is a, I guess, a process where we can somehow create a scenario to prevent this from happening next term, and the term after, and the term after. And what that answer is, I'm not sure. But I'm sure with staff's assistance and the Waterfront Trust, we can find some sort of formula to prevent this from growing legs next term and creating the same scenario that this dog and pony show is created for I don't know how many terms. So I do want to, I do appreciate the time. And I want to thank every member of the Waterfront Trust, including the staff and the auditor for being here today. And just hope that we're not back here again some other time trying to rationalize something we've already rationalized.
So I think the question is, do you agree? We do appreciate that. I know that you've been listening intently and wanted the opportunity to chime in. We are almost exhausting our first-time speakers list. We have one speaker on the second-time speakers list, I believe, Counselor Farr. And then there are two motions subsequent to this. Counselor Farr?
Thank you. And I just want to say, I appreciate all the questions, and I'm glad we have been able to offer some clarity. Just to the value-for-money concern, fair enough. It's not exclusive to just the Waterfront Trust. It is quite a trend in some questions that have been asked. And again, fair enough, we did our due diligence. We meet once a month. We talk a lot as a board. And, you know, we've gone over more than just how to present, but how to proudly present the facts, the actual facts, as it relates to all things WT. One of the things we had asked was for staff, my question is for staff. So do you want me to receive the presentation first and then ask?
I just, I did set a precedence by allowing a couple of really long...
Yeah, and I was ready to get to the question, but no longer elaborate.
Is it for, is the question for the presenters?
Well, I want to, okay, through you to our Chair, you recall, we confirmed that if we were to bring in-house, everything that we do, the 130 approximate employees, everything that the millions and millions of people up until now have grown to love and embrace, the amenities we built, the services we provide, so on and so forth, through you, Chair. Do you recall the number approximately of what it would cost if we were to do all that in-house? If you don't, I can ask staff at the appropriate time.
Yeah, likely better.
I will ask staff that question at the appropriate time. I have, I have an approximate number for you there.
Thank you very much, staff.
I will move to receive the presentation.
Unanimous seconded?
Do I like to speak to that motion, please?
No. You can move to receive it, and then you can put your motion. You're not, you don't want to speak to your motion to receive the presentation.
I do, and I think I can.
It's actually at the discretion of the Chair. But if you still have the floor, that's fine. I don't know if it's in Brno's. But if you want to speak to the reception of it, that's fine. Second-time speaker.
The only thing I'll say is I respect you, Mr. Chair. I just elaborated on my last question. We'll make that my comment. So I'll smooth.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Do you have questions of staff?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
At the appropriate time, I have questions of staff.
At the appropriate time determined by the Chair, is it, you've, there is a motion on the floor to receive it?
Yeah. And I want to also suggest that I have no problem receiving. But there are subsequent questions of staff, and an opportunity that needs to be provided based on some...
So we're going to do that as soon as you receive it. That's our number protocol. Here we go. All those in favor? Carrie, let's try to keep things moving, guys, as much as we want to be long around the barn. What is it called?
Ice.
Oh, okay. So if we could please have on the presentation, there is a motion to be put, Counselor Farr, if you'd like to put your motion, now would be the appropriate time, followed by any questions and our comments to staff.
I just, my questions revolve around what we heard in the presentation and are not relevant to the motion.
Okay. Then if you would like to, now that the motion has been received, forward questions to staff. Please feel free to do so.
Through you to Mike Zagarik, or Chris Murray, whoever can help. Would you suggest that approximately a million bucks, 1.1 million extra annually would be what it costs if we were to bring all of the operations folks across the city and elsewhere have grown to love of the Waterfront Trust in-house?
Through you, Chair, or Chair. The, we did have a quick look at, given the variety of positions and the number of positions that are employed, when we look at it, comparable staff that would do that work here at the City of Hamilton, HR did have a look at it. And the figure is, including benefits, is approaching $8 million.
Appreciate that. Through you, Chair, to whomever on staff presented the document that's been alluded to on a few occasions here today, that was in our August 18th council agenda, respecting our Board of Trustee motion that we forwarded, that initially began the conversations that we've been having all summer and through this fall. Through you, Chair, are we in any way, shape, or form in this document seeking autonomy? To whomever can answer.
Please frame the question more succinctly in a way that, because I'm seeing some folks that are just not clear about...
Does this document dated August 3, 2017, presented on the agenda August 18 of City Council, in any way reflect and ask by the Waterfront Trust Board of Directors to seek autonomy?
So this is the question of clarity that was presented once and twice by the accountant regarding the governance question, just from a staff perspective?
So through the Chair, we don't think it represents autonomy. You're just seeking to increase, you know, city representation on the board.
Thank you. Through you to someone on the West Harbor staff, through you, Chair, there's approximately, actually, you can give the actual number so far on what we're investing in the West Harbor. And of that, is the Waterfront Trust overseeing all of it? Through you, Chair?
Through you, Mr. Chair, no. Going by memory here, because I don't have all the background with me, of about the $80 million that is allocated to the West Harbor redevelopment, approximately $15 million of that $80 million is within the Waterfront Trust's domain.
Through you, Chair, to our clerk, how does council receive the annual financials? This is from a agenda point of view. Through you, Chair.
Through, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the financial statements are sent to the clerk, and then they are forwarded to Mike Zagarik and other members of finance. And they typically will go on the agenda of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee to be received.
Okay. And is that the process that followed the 2015 financials for the Waterfront Trust?
Through, Mr. Deputy Mayor, right now at this time, I have found the 2015 financial statements that were sent to the City Clerk's office and forwarded to finance on September 9, 2016. However, the system at the moment isn't, we're searching to see if they went to AFNA, and we're not able to find it.
Okay. So generally speaking, the AFNA is a standing committee that would go to all of council, and it would be ratified. And you can't at this time, then, if you're having problems with the system, verify if that was a unanimous vote?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. No, the system itself is not giving me a problem. It's just, we can't find that set going to AFNA.
Fair enough.
We have found the other ones that you were looking for, the 2002 to 2007. They went on November 5, 28. And you had also asked about the project management agreement that was approved by council on March 26, 2014.
Oh, thank you. That was my next question. So...
I do, I do have, this may be to your benefit, Counselor Farr, if I may. Mr. Zagarik chimed in, doesn't often do so, but when he does, typically has pertinent information.
I'm happy. I don't get to see him with no eyes in the back of my head, so I'm happy to hear from him. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, just in terms of clerk's challenge of finding those statements, I believe, if my recollection is correct, they came to council as a communication item to council rather than AFNA that particular year. So who can tell me, so the project management, Madam Clerk, if you had that before you, was that a unanimous decision of council? Through you, Chair?
Through, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I did not look at the vote right now. I've just found the actual statement. I have to go back to the council minutes to find out. I will check that for you right now.
And I have to say, you're doing a fantastic job, Stephanie, to be able to keep up with all this newfound old information. Thank you.
Well, maybe we'll get it before the debate's through. But thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay. So we have Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, during the course of the presentation by the Waterfront Trust, each and every Counselor that participated in the discussion asked a number of questions and made some comments. And one comment that was made was in respect to value-for-audit consideration for the Waterfront Trust. In my understanding, that the scope of the Waterfront Trust and the value for money don't align. And so I'm going to, I don't know if Charles was here, but to leave an open statement, you can't get a second. I think, first of all, we need to understand what the concern is. And that is left silent because it was just an open-ended comment that was put out there with no way to address it. So my understanding of money-for-value audit is they would go in and determine, in the current operation, are they being efficient in regards to cost versus benefit type of analysis? But the scope of the money-for-value for audit doesn't go in and say, hey, this operation isn't the right operation. You need a whole, you need to bring it inside. So that's the clarification I'm looking for. Because I think there's a misunderstanding of using that tool.
So we're looking, yeah.
So I'll start. I think, first of all, the value-for-money audit work that Charles and his team does is certainly for functions that the City of Hamilton has control over, direct control over. And I think the mayor's point about the... the clarity around the, the status of the Hamilton Waterfront Trust was an important one. An arms-length organization which begs the question, you know, do you even have the authority or right to extend and, or request or demand an audit of, of the functions within? That's, that's the question, and, and again, I guess, short of a, a legal opinion here on that particular question. The second part is, even if you wanted to do that, assuming you could legally, I mean, just remind everyone that you approve a work plan for Charles every year and his team, or actually, I think it's a multi-year work plan. And, you know, this is nowhere on that radar at all, even if it could be put on it, so I don't know if there's a, a legal right that you have to in fact, you know, require or demand a value-for-money audit of that, of that agency.
Which is consistent, as I understand it, when we actually entertained the idea with HECBI, and because it was a separate entity, we were, my understanding, we couldn't do it, so I want to make it clear, so just not hanging out there, that you can't get a second, or for something that people know couldn't apply to this particular organization. Thank you.
Okay, comments accepted, that exhaust the second time? Speakers list, yes, thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I have found the answers to both of those questions. The 2015 financial statements for the Hamilton Waterfront Trust were received by council on November 9th, 2016, and the vote for the, the project management agreement was done on March 26th, 2015, and that was a recorded vote all in favor of 14, two absent and unopposed.
Can you please, just for the clarity of the record, given where the question went, state on the record who was present and who was absent?
Certainly. The vote, would you like me to read the resolution itself?
Yes, no, just, just who was present and who wasn't.
So, present were Councillors McCady, Farr, Marula, Jackson, Whitehead, Ferguson, Pasuda, Partridge, Duval, Collins, Clark.
This was 2016?
2014.
It's okay, I'll, I'll get it offline, I'm not going to pursue it. I'm, I have the most recent project management agreement, so I, my, yeah, it was very, very, very recently, I, 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 it was unanimous, but we'll leave it at that, I just wanted to get it on the record. Thank you, I appreciate your work, Stephanie, I should have been more clear.
Okay. Okay, so with that being said, can we please have a motion? Well, it's already been received. I, I will turn the floor over to Counselor Farr. Counselor Farr, the floor is yours.
For my motion, thank you, this is moved by myself, seconded by Mayor Eisenberger regarding the Waterfront Trust, whereas HW2T has established a, in 2000, sorry, whereas, the Hamilton Waterfront Trust was established in 2000 to administer funds to develop, improve public access, and animate the lands in Hamilton's east and west waterfront areas. Whereas, the city's waterfront is being further revitalized, and significant development is currently planned for Piers 5 through 8. Whereas, in 2015, ownership of the Marine Discovery Center and related lands was transformed from the federal government to the City of Hamilton, therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to meet with the Hamilton Waterfront Trust representatives to develop options of mutual interest and report back to council by December 27th. Mr. Chair, that is seconded by our mayor, Mayor Fred Eisenberger. It is the result of, you know, some questions and comments that we heard today, comments in, in specific to, you know, footprints that we currently have long-term leases on that we are currently seeking to RFP. Also, questions that I brought up at our last West Harbor Subcommittee meeting. I just want to thank all of the staff who helped to this point, get us to what I think is a very prudent motion, and I most appreciate that this would come to us in short order because we do have work to do, and we do work hard at the Waterfront Trust Board of Director.
Thank you very much. We have Mayor Eisenberger, followed by Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, I, I've kind of begged off of making comments, and I'm, you know, I'm not one to spend a whole lot of time looking backwards, I'm really more interested in looking forward, and where do we go from here? And so, given, given there have been significant amounts of changes on the waterfront in terms, in terms of ownership, going from the Port Authority and Port Authority Federal Government, federal government now, to the City of Hamilton, given that there are some significant developments now happening on Pier 7 and 8, that there are a range of issues that we still need to kind of get our heads around in terms of how we collaborate and work forward with the Waterfront Trust. So that's the thrust of this motion, is to, to have a look at all of the issues that are outstanding, and come, have our staff make some recommendations as to what, what the way forward is in terms of the best direction that we can provide in terms of the interest of the waterfront. And I, I would say at the outset that I, I today believe and have always believed that the Waterfront Trust has worked in the best interest of the taxpayers, and has worked in the best interest of providing activity and opportunity at the waterfront, and I have no doubt about that. I think certainly the, the reporting that we've heard today has, has confirmed that. But, and as I mentioned earlier, the outstanding question that's always been a burr in some people's minds has been the reporting mechanism and the fact that we have a standalone agency working in a space that the City of Hamilton is actually very much engaged in, and, and how does that all fit together? And so the, the purpose of this motion is to have those discussions and bring, bring these organizations together to work out, to, to understand and appreciate what the city's interests are, what the trust's interests are going forward, how and if they mesh together, and then what the way forward is after that. So that's a, I think that's a positive step to take. We can look backwards, you know, a long ways, and go back to all, all the way to 2000, and I think many of us were here then, and the, the long, you know, arduous process of the, the discussions we've had with the Port Authority and how, how far we've come, and I would disagree a little bit with a previous speaker that said, you know, things have fallen off the rails. I don't think so, I think we're, we're in a very good place. I think discussions have happened in terms of Marina, and discussions have happened in terms of land ownership, and all of that is transferred over to the, to the City of Hamilton. And, and we have an active and viable port that continues to operate and create value in our community, so I think we're in a, in a, a good space to start talking about what is, what is the way forward from here? What, what next steps? What issues do we need to resolve? Who do we need to resolve them with? And, and how do we then attempt to avoid the kind of consternation that, that has been created here today, and, and in past months, and in past councils, in fact? So, I'm, I'm very happy to, to put full weight behind this, I, I think this is important to do. Let's look forward, let's, let's not continue to look backwards, let's look at where, where we can continue to create value for our taxpayers. And it's really all about providing that, the kind of access that, that people want back to their waterfront. And I think, I would say that the Waterfront Trust has done a spectacular job job of providing that, not only on the bayfront, but also on the lakefront. And so we, you know, we also forget that this Waterfront Trust actually created and developed and actually put in place with some arduous work, I think, some, some arduous community work from Counselor Collins back in the day to get this approved, to have a trail happen on our lakefront that is continuous with the Burlington Trail. A spectacular effort to, to actually make that happen, and I know there was lots of consternation at the time about residents and homeowners, and, you know, this was all city property, and, and the Waterfront Trust actually made it happen in a, probably in a way that otherwise we wouldn't have been able to. So I'm, I'm a fan, but there is now some conflicting issues, and we need to resolve those, and I think this motion helps us do that. So I, I want to compliment the, the Waterfront Trust for the work they've done in the past. There's much more that we need to do going forward. We all love our waterfront development, whether it's the trolley, or the boat that's out there, or the trail that we can access all the way to Coates Paradise, or along the lake. The access has been improved significantly, and we, we will hope to continue that and marry that with the developments that we're doing on Pier 7, or 5 through 8. So I think there's great opportunity here to, to work through issues, and hopefully this motion will get us there. And then hopefully, we'll, we'll put this to bed for a while so that we can get on with getting that good work done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for the comments. We have on the list Counselors Whitehead, followed by Counselor Skelly. Counselor Whitehead, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and being on eve of Halloween, and metaphorically speaking, the boogeyman wasn't found. Having said that, in, in the context of Waterfront Trust, the, the, the issue for me with this motion, it's not an issue, is I get maybe clarity, is I had understood that this was already happening, and now is this motion just reinforcing what we were apparently already doing?
So if I can, through the Chairman, I mean, certainly there have been some informal talks with representatives of the Waterfront Trust, I think, though, in light of some of these recent circumstances, it's, I think, prudent to give very specific direction to staff to finalize those discussions and bring it back in a very timely way to council to make a decision, so it's not, it's not as if we didn't know each other, we certainly do, but I think in, in pushing the issue the way that I think this motion does, I think it's prudent.
Yeah, I'm a bit confused by that. I mean, I don't mind having this represented as just formalizing something that's actually already taking place through discussions, because I've been, made inquiries. My understanding, this was already happening. This might be formalizing it, but to suggest that all of a sudden you needed this direction, I find unsatisfactory, and, and I think unfortunately might even leave the community to believe that you need these kinds of things to do the right thing. So I understood that these discussions in regards to that relationship between the Waterfront Trust and the city, and, and how these things would unfold were already taking place. Yes or no?
So, through the Chair, I mean, with most organizations that we have a relationship with, we have conversations with, so we do that as a regular basis. But there are issues here, as I think we had pointed out, there are five consortiums that are going to be bidding on, or on the Pier 8 lands to advance them in the manner which you've approved. So we want to make sure that that happens in a seamless way, and that the ability of the Waterfront Trust to make money to continue their successful operation, those two things are, are not mutually exclusive, those things overlap, and we need to sit down and resolve those, whatever issues that might arise out of that, that confluence of, of two important agendas, so that's why we think it's important to get to a final answer on, on, on those lands and bring it to you in, in a timely way. So that's, that's what I think this direction does. I mean, any of the other minor issues, we resolve, and we don't obviously waste this council's time. But, you know, this is something that I think is, is timely, and, and that's why I say we, we applaud that you're giving us this direction.
So I'm going to take the counter approach, because it seems to me that if we didn't have this motion, it's been suggested we wouldn't be doing this.
I would say, you know, I, I think by directing us to get something back to you in December just puts, you know, added fire behind coming to a conclusion on conversations that were evolving, so I think that's, it's not like the conversations weren't taking place. It really is about putting a fine point as to when you need this, you want us to resolve this, so I think that, that's, that's probably the important part here.
So, Mr. Chair, I really appreciate the clarification, because our staff do an excellent job, and they, and often they, they understand these interrelationships, and they read papers too. They understand the dynamics, and they're very proactive in moving forward with discussions to get us to where we need to get. And the point I was trying to drive is, I don't mind reinforcing what they're already doing, but to suggest that they, that the only way they could do it was through this direction was concerning to me, because I know those discussions are already being had. To formalize that through this direction, I have no issue with. Thank you.
Okay, we are now on to, I do have a speakers list, I appreciate it, so just for, you're taking yourself off, okay? We will go to Counselor Collins, followed by Counselor Marula.
I did want to follow up on the mayor's comments in terms of the unresolved issues, and I, I had asked during the question period the whole issue related to the ownership of the building, the leased lands that the trust and Brewers currently lease from us that stand in the way of us developing, I think, three of the nine development blocks. So I'm hoping that staff can come back with a plan to address not just the trust issue, but the Brewers' marine issue, and that there'll be a date attached to that at some point, so I know the mayor raised it as well, in terms of there's some things that need to happen, in terms of us accomplishing our goals to have that area development ready, and then someone in place to buy it soon. So I'm just hoping that staff have taken note of that, and will come back to either GIC or the other, another appropriate forum to give us an update on what our plan is to address it, because it's a big, it's a big outstanding issue.
Duly noted, and we have General Manager, Mr. Chris Murray, wishing to speak to it.
Okay, the, he, so through the Chair, so based on that comment, I mean, certainly, we're not, we will be back in December with a fulsome answer about the stakeholders that are active in that area, and how our development can move ahead. So we'll have answers for you in December.
I appreciate that, Mayor Murray. Are there any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. I'm just balancing out, just balance. I did demote him, absolutely did. Further from the General Manager's position, so we have Counselor Collins. Those are the remainder of your questions. Counselor Marula, he's fine, we have a motion on the floor, moved. Counselor Partridge.
Yes, thank you. In light of all the discussion for the past three hours, could we have a standing recorded vote, please?
Yes. The motion is before us, the request is for a standing recorded vote on, all in favor? Let, let the record show, it is unanimous. For all present. Thank you. Those who aren't here could put their hands up. I would like to now pass the Chair over to Counselor Ferguson, I believe was the last. I have a motion that's titled 9.1. It is pertaining to this file, and rather than change the wording of the motion to reflect the Waterfront Trust, I've left it general, but I would like to put this motion now.
So I think we need a motion, we have already put the agenda, move it forward on the agenda.
Correct, that is the motion I am moving.
You're a seconder to that motion?
Counselor Pearson. Did you second it?
Did you second it again?
Oh. Counselor Marula is going to second it.
Counselor Marula, are you going to second the motion? Okay, so the motion's been put to, to move it forward on the agenda, discussion on it?
Thank you.
Seeing none? All in favor? Oh, question? Didn't look that way. Go ahead, Counselor Pearson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor and Chair. At the, at the meeting when the notice of motion put, was put on, there was a, a request that you come back, or information come back as far as the qualification of receiving substantial.
The motion before us is just to move it up on the agenda.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And we will cover that, I do appreciate, I appreciate the question.
Okay, so I'm just going to put the motion now to move it up on the agenda, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So Counselor Green, put your motion.
Thank you very much, this is moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Farr. This is the Open Government Access to Information for the City of Hamilton funded boards and agencies. Whereas, in our corporate priorities adopted within the 2016-2025 strategic plan, community engagement and participation in Hamilton has an open, transparent, and accessible approach to city government that engages with and empowers all citizens to be involved in their community. And whereas the City of Hamilton's Open Data Program is moving the city towards being a more open, transparent, and accessible government, and whereas the goals of Open Data Program are to, one, enable the community to have access to city data easily and transparently, two, to deliver open data that is meaningful and of high quality, and, three, build a sustainable open data program through the development of policies and growth backed by a business process to continually evolve and improve the open data delivery service. Therefore be it resolved that all external boards and agencies that receive substantial funding contribution from the City of Hamilton be requested to develop policies or practices that are similar to the city's in regard to the posting of board agendas, minutes, and associated accompanying presentations, documents, and inclusive of financial statements. So that is the motion as put, and I would like to speak to it.
Go ahead.
The, open of the presentation, the members of the Waterfront Trust led us with a page that said, perception and reality can be two different things. And I saw that in big, bold, black and white, and I was concerned with some of the answers that were put forward as to why it took them so long to be able to provide basic information at the request of media. This is a governance issue for me, I don't feel like it was in any way addressed, I would say appropriately, given the, given the allegations that were flowing around out there. And for me, I'm, I am much of the mind that we try to go after the systems and principles that cause this kind of confusion. So the point of this motion is to remedy this situation from happening in further terms of office here. terms of office here by requiring agencies, arms-length boards and agencies, post in a timely manner their agenda, minutes, and financials. This is not onerous in today's day and age in any way, shape, or form. If you are a board member and you receive this information, you should be able to provide it with the forward of an email. So I don't buy this as being a staffing issue. I was courteous enough to leave it out of the official motion in terms of why we are where we are here today. But in working with staff and recognizing the complexities around our enrichment program, the small community groups, I assured Counselor Jackson, this is not going to be encumbering our, you know, our Santa Claus parades and so on and so forth. So through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Mike Zegarek, if you could please provide a full definition of the term substantial as you see for, well, I beat you to it, Terry, for the purpose and information of this committee.
So through the chair, if it's the intent of committee to exempt those organizations that don't receive a substantial amount of funding directly from city, so for instance, substantial may be an amount in excess of a quarter million dollars, if I look at the city enrichment program, all but one organization receives funding less than a quarter million dollars. Hamilton Art Gallery receives a million dollars, the next closest would be Boris Braat, I believe, at $160,000. So if it's the intent to exclude or exempt those organizations from such a request, the therefore section could be amended to read that all external boards and agencies that receive City of Hamilton grants in excess of a quarter million dollars, again, from the City of Hamilton be requested to develop policies. So if that provides some clarity as to not to create an onerous requirement on some smaller organizations that may receive a level of funding that is, you know, marginal, $3,000 to $5,000. So just for clarity purposes, then, Mike, you're suggesting that the substantial funding contribution should be amended to say in excess of $250,000? So through the chair, that would preclude those organizations that receive funding, for instance, through the city enrichment program, with the exception of one which would be the art gallery. Again, it's my understanding that the next largest would be the Boris Braat, which receives $160,000. Okay, so Counselor Green, is that okay with you to amend?
Yes, absolutely, and we were working, you know, with staff, you know, as I say, the discussion that we had, the three and a half hour discussion that we just had, I think could have been avoided. And I think that the perception in the community regarding irregularities is easily avoided when you provide the proper information in a timely way.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, the originally move saying substantial funding, that sounds like, I know you don't like the word friendly amendment, but if the mover's prepared to change it to anything in excess of $250,000 per year, how do we procedurally do this?
We would need actually a motion on the amendment, and just for clarification, because I heard it put two different ways, we'll say, just, I need to clarify whether you want it to say receive a substantial City of Hamilton, sorry, substantial City of Hamilton funding contribution in excess of $250,000, or City of Hamilton grant in excess.
I think we can remove substantial and put funding in excess of 250. That is the qualifier for, that is the material number for it being.
So it centers anything over $250,000?
Correct.
Okay, Mike, you okay with that? So through the chair, I made reference to grant, and again, we could work with clerks prior to council. What I would want to exclude are organizations who are under some form of a management agreement. So we heard today, an organization that delivers services, project management, they receive funding from the city. And I'm assuming that those allocations would be out of scope in terms of this work. So if an organization is doing project management and that represents $100,000, that is not what you are trying to capture, but rather those organizations who receive either direct levy or grant funding in excess of a quarter million dollars.
That is correct.
Okay, so you were satisfied with the way the clerk read out the revised motion, then? Yeah. So through the chair, I would like to work with the clerk, just to exclude project management fees or other contractual fees involving those organizations in City of Hamilton.
Madam Clerk?
Dear Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think I understand what Mike is saying, and it should say that all external boards and agencies that receive City of Hamilton direct levy or grants in excess of $250,000. Is that correct, Mike?
So through the chair again, I would say at this time, yes, but I'd like to take it away before council, just to ensure that anyone who takes, makes an interpretation of that understands the intent. Okay, so Mike, we'll allow the motion to go forward as changed, then you can tweak it if you want before council. And so, Madam Clerk, mover and second have agreed to this, I think the second, I haven't heard him say yes, but is that okay now, or do we have to form a motion to withdraw the original one?
No, we still need a motion on the amendment, please.
Okay, so you're moving the amendment, Counselor Green?
Yes.
And you're seconding that, Counselor Pearson?
Yes.
Okay.
So the spoken amendment first, that was to change the substantial to $250,000, subject to completely by law. So any discussion on it, then?
Counselor Whitehead. I thought this was about capturing, defining substantial, that was the question that was originally asked, and now you're reframing, you're bringing into an actual amount, which I'm very happy about, so $250,000. I don't need to distinguish between funds and grants, as far as I'm concerned, if it's taxpayers' dollars, they've all fallen into the same category, so $250,000 of taxpayers' dollars, you would require to do X, Y, Z. The piece I'm not clear on in regards to what Mike put forward to support this amendment is he wants to exclude third-party organizations that may have operating management agreements over $250,000. And I'm trying to understand, why would I not want that organization to produce their minutes if they're receiving $250,000 or more in management operation?
Mike?
So through the chair, if that's the will of committee, so for instance, if an organization is providing services through, for instance, I'll use community emergency services, if they're providing some form of social services through a service contract and the value of that is in excess of $250,000, then not making reference to grants, but leaving it simpler in the forms of municipal contribution, you would capture those organizations and they would be included with respect to this direction, this intent. So for clarity purposes, does it include operators, for example, of social housing? So through the chair, if, for instance, by not differentiating, by referencing grants, you may include operators of hostels or other programs that are under a service contract with the City of Hamilton. Or the quad pad arena, those kind of things. Through the chair, that's correct. Okay, Counselor Whitehead. So I'm glad that Mike has suggested that if it was the will of this council, because I certainly do not want to exclude, and I, all I, I don't see grants versus levy, all I see is taxpayer money and $250,000. Anything over $250,000, it's taxpayer money, they should be incorporated in this open data access transparency intent. So I just wanted, I didn't want to water this down in any way, Mr. Chair, I want to make sure that it is all encompassing, we define the substantial to $250,000, fair enough, I'm okay with that, because it's not about penalizing those small organizations or burdening them, but certainly anyone that's receiving $250,000 or over should be subject to this. Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other first-time speakers, so Counselor, or Counselor Pearson, did you want to speak to this issue? You're okay? So Counselor Green, you're second time, or Counselor Scully?
Sorry, I'm just through the chair, just clarification, Madam Clerk, can you tell us what's before us, because what you stated in terms of grants and money from the tax levy was in your wording, but it's not included in our motion? If you could just clarify.
Dear Mr. Deputy Mayor, what Mike was saying and what I read out were suggestions that Mike had put forward, but he would like to tweak it after today's GIC, but before it goes to council, so it will be reflected in the GIC report. But basically, he was suggesting that groups that receive in excess of $250,000, that receive City of Hamilton grants or direct levy funding.
Thank you.
Okay, so no more first-time speakers, so Counselor Green, second time.
Yeah, I just want to double down on the spirit of this motion, was for boards and agencies. The scope that was presented by Counselor Whitehead is a much larger project in scope and encompassing probably greater facets of the corporation than is encapsulated in the spirit of this motion. I don't disagree, but I think for me to focus this motion on what's before us and given the, I'm going to say disappointing response from the earlier presentation, this motion is directed to remedy that in future, in future years, and apply a broader policy of open data and open governance to all the boards and agencies that we support in a substantial way. So I appreciate staff for helping with the idea of substantial, I didn't want to bog down the enrichment process, and I would ask that if we want to include a conversation around other facets of the corporation, that perhaps we present that in a separate motion to allow for this to move forward now as it is.
Okay, so I have no more first time, more second time speakers, so to the amendment only. Counselor Whitehead. For clarification, if we're using the context of the waterfront trust, my understanding is that it is a management agreement, and it is, and I don't know what the value of the dollars are, but I'm suggesting they should be captured in this, well, not if you're exempting management agreements, which was suggested by. Let me just check with Mike. Mike, is it, would waterfront trust be captured in this motion, then? So through the chair, my initial thought is they wouldn't be for these reasons, is A, they're not an official board, so our boards would be the Hamilton Police Services, Hamilton Public Library, the Conservation Authorities, and the farmers market. Agencies, given that they don't receive a grant, they receive, I believe, in the area of $334,000 annually for the outdoor rink and grounds maintenance, and again, that's an agreement as well as all of the other project management fees relating to a series of projects. So the challenge is, with respect to agreements, is we likely have a significant number of organizations who have agreements with the city as it relates to providing services. We haven't queried that, I don't know what the magnitude is of those organizations and that threshold of a quarter million dollars. But again, if it's the intent to capture those relationships, financial relationships, we could take that away and we could try to assess the magnitude of how many organizations have a relationship with the City of Hamilton where they provide a service and receive a revenue associated with that fee. Okay, so the motion that's before the committee now is that the waterfront trust would not be captured, is what I heard. And, correct, Mike? So Mr. Chair, I have the floor. I just want to get clarity, then I'll come back to Counselor Whitehead. So for instance, that's correct, and I would make a parallel comparison with the Conservation Authority. Conservation Authority receives funding from City of Hamilton as it relates to operating the Confederation Park in Westfield, and so they too, based on the preliminary language of the motion, would be out of scope in terms of that reporting relationship. Counselor Whitehead? So Mr. Chair, understanding the intent and the concerns and the genesis for the motion, it's really not targeting the very issue that created the genesis for the motion, and that's what I was, I captured in the comments that I heard originally from Mike Zegarek. And back to my, you know, I think maybe he can bring back a report in regards to who would be impacted, and then we can make final decisions or rewriting, but I really do, right now, without understanding the implications, want to capture all funding of $250,000 over with this operating management agreements or otherwise. I want to capture them all and then bring that report back, understand who impacts, what the encumbrances may or may not be, and then fine-tune it and let it go through. But as it is now, it doesn't really accomplish what I think, what was originally intended. Okay, I'm going to go to Counselor Farr next, as the first time speaker. So we've already stated earlier today, and I'll state it again for the record, the waterfront trust is ready, willing, and able to include our minutes henceforth, and we'll put them on our website and send them to whoever requests them, if that's the case. So if you want to deal with specifics, I actually appreciate the idea as the seconder, but I'll leave it to the mover of the motion of actually instead just ask Mike to report back on what are the ramifications, what does it all mean, who does it entail at 250 plus, whether you're receiving operating dollars, we don't get a grant, we get operating dollars at the waterfront trust in the tune of 330K annually to run the year-round rink, that's it. It's not a grant, we're not going through the enrichment fund, but there are other ramifications that Mike is showing some concern for, I guess, in what he's said so far, but I'll leave it to you, and if you want to throw WT in this motion and leave it the way it is, that's fine too. So Counselor Green, do you wish to refer this back to staff, then?
I most certainly do, and I apologize for the confusion, I thought I'd worked with staff in a very specific way, it's very clear that wasn't the case, and so I'm a little bit, a tad bit caught off that the spirit of my motion has departed in the last two weeks, but fair enough, we'll refer it back to staff and hope to have a better, clearer understanding of.
So Madam Clerk, we need a motion to refer this to staff for further information, do we not?
At this point, I need a hold button.
At this point, Mike?
So first, because the amendment was moved and seconded and put on the floor, I need a mover and a seconder to withdraw the amendment.
Moved by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Green, or Counselor Partridge, you can hand up. All in favor of withdrawing the amendment?
Aye.
And then you need a motion to refer the main motion to staff for a report back?
Correct.
Okay, moved by Counselor Green, seconded by Counselor Scully, seeing discussion on that? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? That carries back to you, or the chair.
I appreciate the acting chairmanship. We have now item 8.1, which is the discussion on municipal greenhouse gas.
Second.
Moved by Marula, seconded by Whitehead, all those in favor?
Aye.
8.2.
Dear Mr. Deputy Mayor, just to remind everybody that you are moving it as amended with the numbers that I noted, the changes to the numbers, thank you.
May I please have a mover and a seconder for item 8.2?
Moved.
Moved by Ferguson, seconded by Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
8.3?
Aye.
We got Johnson and Partridge, all those in favor?
Aye.
We got, the Manning report just got messed up, eh? We have 8.3?
Moved.
Moved by Marula, seconded by Pearson, all those in favor?
Aye.
8.4?
Aye.
We got Whitehead and Partridge, all those in favor?
Aye.
8.5?
Aye.
Moved by Whitehead, seconded by Ferguson, all those in favor?
Aye.
8.6?
Moved by his worship, Mayor Eisenberger.
Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Ward Two Counselor Jason Farr, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we have item 9.2, Counselor Collins, would you like to introduce your motion?
Second. It's moved by Collins, seconded by Marula, all those in favor? On 10, are there any notices of motion?
I'd like to waive the rules to introduce a motion, and it's, I'm okay with it. It's coming. No, it's coming, it's a.
Oh, I know this motion.
Whereas Gord Downey passed away today, October 18th, 2017, whereas Gord Downey and the Hip performed the first two sellout shows at Cops Coliseum, therefore be resolved that a plaque be erected in memorial of Gord Downey at Cops Coliseum. And just quickly, I do got to give some credit, a lot of credit, to Gabe McElusso, who at the time was the general manager of Heck Five, and he reminded me that they were not only the first band to sell out two in a row, but also as a direct result of that relationship, Gord Downey's agent, Jake, can't remember the last name, was on the board of Chorus, who decides where the Junals would be hosted, and as a direct result of that relationship being built at that time with Gabe, former mayor Bob Morrell, was the reason why Hamilton ended up becoming hosting the first city outside of Toronto to host the Junals back in the 80s. So as a direct result of that, we have the motion before us, and I look forward to it being approved, thank you.
Thank you very much, we have Counselors Pearson, followed by Whitehead. Counselor Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, certainly thank Counselor Marula for the motion coming forward, very sad news this morning at the age of 53, but I just want to make sure, Counselor Marula, you mentioned Cops Coliseum, it's first Ontario place officially, so.
Thank you, and I certainly support the endeavor and, you know, no one can question the Canadiana and storytelling of the tragically hip. The caveat, though, I would ask staff, because I've had at least one or two calls, is when, whether it's a statue or or a plaque or whatever, that we put First Ontario Place as a council and yet it's privately managed, I don't know what the policies and procedures that are in place to protect these decisions of council in respect to these plaques and so forth. I could give you examples, if you wish, of things that have been lost at First Ontario Place that need to be found. So I want to make sure that we have the process in place on a go-forward basis, that the inventory of cultural gifts and placking and so forth is audited and accounted for within that facility. So that's a caveat, I'll work with Anna Bradford, but it has raised concerns when renovations take place and things disappear at the facility. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So the motion is put. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried, excellent. We have general information, may I please have a motion to approve the amendments of the outstanding business list as shown before you?
Is that this?
Moved by Counselor Partridge, seconded by Counselor Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carried. We have item 12, which is a, may I please have a motion to approve the October 4th closed session minutes? And then, Madam Clerk, am I to go through all of this here? Do we have to go in camera? And then, we do. May I please have a motion to move into closed session respecting item 12.2 pursuant to section 8.1 subsection C of the city's procedural bylaw 14-300 and section 239-2 subsection C of the Ontario Municipal Act 2001 as amended, as the subject matter pertains to a proposed impending acquisition or disposition of lands for city purposes. Can I now ask that the public and any staff who are not required to be in this closed session meeting, please exit the chambers, taking all of your personal belongings with you. Members of the public will be invited to return to hear any further deliberations upon committee reconvening in open session indicated by the removal of the frosting on the windows and the elimination of the white noise. The committee will, in the event that they are closed session for more than 30 minutes, wait up to five minutes upon reconvening into open session and before proceeding with the meeting to provide members of the public and the media time to return to the meeting room.
All in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
10.
Aye.